Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is the appointed hour of seven o'clock on March 18. Welcome to the Lexington City Council meeting. I'd call the meeting to order and I'd invite everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda. The published agenda, I would ask for council's consideration to move the item under new business regarding the agreement with Friends of Rockbridge Swimming to presentations and be item 5.4 for review and consideration. And then to add under new business, the multiple offers that we've received for the Spotswood property and the Piovano building. And I would ask if council members have any objection or anything else for the agenda. Hearing none, with those adjustments, we will approve the agenda. Next item is presentations and I would call upon Eric Wilson for a minute in history opportunity. Eric, take it away.
Hi, I'm gonna share my screen. This will work. Just a few slides for you. Continued commitments to history. Is that visible? Somebody could voice in?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. So, we'll just take a couple minutes. One of the things I want to stress tonight are the ties between local and state histories. We're in an important element of state history. Lexington has an important history in the state and I think both our museums, we have nine museums here, mostly history-related museums, are well passed into the Virginia Association of Museums and other networks. So, I just want to look at a couple things. I think a number of you will have seen in the paper yesterday, a story about an exhibit at the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts that constellates a lot of our groups here and shows the capacity of educational institutions, civic institutions, museums, and tourism to come together. I think at another time, maybe we can talk about history and tourism and nature and what this area has to offer. This is looking back at the series that we did. I'm not going to go into it, save to say that the final installation was on the history of the city's black cemeteries and that grew in no small part out of the city's work to explore the histories, both at Oak Grove and the two black cemeteries Lexington has managed. It ties into a state contest, a state election that really was a landmark for this area and elsewhere. But this is what I wanted to show tonight. You see four organizations up here, two state organizations. Virginia Museum of Fine Arts in Richmond and State Park, Rockbridge Historical Society, and some of the archives and libraries at WNL have helped shape this exhibit, which can be seen in person or through our website. You can see a curator's lecture that features several artifacts and input from these organizations. Here is one of ours. This is a chair that was owned by Margaret Junkin Preston. She was the daughter of the Washington College President, the wife of JTL Preston. A very unique distinctive chair that literally shows the history of the namesake of our area. And in order to get that contributed to the exhibit and get some restoration work done, we had Eric Offelman here and some of his chemistry students help analyze what was in the paint. What could we find out? Were there earlier versions? So, that partnership between a university, scientific, historic, artistic organizations really helped and brought that into being. This may go toward another time. I just wanted to make sure that as citizens and the city are thinking about policies about street renaming and what lies behind them, that people are aware of the book that Rockbridge Historical Society published, gosh, I'm gonna do math, 45 years ago. And if you're not, they're available in libraries, they're out of print, but they have very good resources and we as an organization want to be able to provide accurate information about how these things have come into being, how changes have been made over time in different ways. And as with other things, to be a kind of consultant that can help provide solid ground for good civic discussion. Got introductions. There's a very good means here of searching names, when streets were created and named and often renamed, and who was responsible for that, whether council or individual developers or institutions. You can explore your own streets. You can see places like Houston Street that have had four or five names. Lewis Street used to be near Oak Grove Cemetery and now it's where it stands, near the other cemetery in town. And what is Lee Avenue? That is the third name of that street in time. So, to ground those conversations, this is a great way to explore history. It's in small bits, very readable. We hope people will use it and can contact us to find out more as you're interested. So, thank you for your time and all the work you're putting into history and our community and its welfare.
Eric, thank you for the minute in history and it's incumbent upon us all to study and think about where we've come from, to know where we're going as we make decisions shaping our future as a city. And grateful to you and to the Historic Society for your support and information. Next item on the agenda is BMI Aquatic Center presentation. I would call upon Colonel Dale Brown. Colonel Brown, take it away.
Thank you. Share screen as well. Just truth and lending. This is going to be a briefing on our capital improvement program and all our projects. Just a little bit of miscommunication between myself and the team manager, but hopefully you can all see that. I appreciate the opportunity to come down and speak. We have done this, Dallas and I, John Clark and I have done this for a number of years, knowing how important this information is to the city and the surrounding area. And the last couple of years, there's been a little bit of hiatus, but I'm glad we're getting back to being able to share this information with you. I'm not talking our entire capital program. I'm gonna focus on the projects that are in progress and coming up funded. I understand you've got a busy agenda tonight, so I'm gonna try and be brief and move quickly through this, but certainly if you have a question, ask away. I'm assuming you all can see that. Okay. Get this to work. This is, you know, a couple of slides that I've put together over time. And it's interesting, you're not there to examine building by building, but just get the shock effect is that everything that you see in orange has been new construction since 2003. Everything that you see in blue has been renovated since 2002 and I will point out my own mistakes and miss the fact that, you know, we spent $25 million renovating old and new barracks and I missed that. What you see in yellow is work that's coming up or in progress. You know, get to that, but it's just, you know, it's an important detail. We get asked, I've been asked several times, how little tiny BMI gets so much money from the state, but it's really made an impact on BMI. If you look at it chronologically, you know, there's been work going on here since 2004. You know, the projects have just steady right through the recession. If you had to know the dollars, it's almost $600 million in that timeframe that's been brought into this area. You know, and that means a lot in terms of revenues and jobs. What I'm gonna focus on tonight is those that are in the green box. Those are the ones that are ongoing now and the ones that are recently approved by the state. Just some interesting tidbits that I like to share. I share them with the alumni and faculty and staff. Again, another picture view, the ones I'm gonna talk about tonight are the ones that are in pink, just to give you an idea where they are on post. Boxing around a bit, some are aware of, some are not. Scottship Hall renovation. This is the ongoing project. It's a $43 million project. The team is Bobby Holmes is the design team, writing team is the construction manager. It's a 20,000 square foot addition and renovation of the existing facility. It's phased. Phase one is complete. The project is roughly 75% complete. We're looking at final completion this fall. So, in the spring semester, this will be totally available. With the growth in the core to 1,700, these are our large departments. There's six departments in here. Literally, everybody takes the large programs, even if you're in the STEM program, all cadets are passing through this facility. So, this is a great addition to the capabilities that we have here on post, both faculty as well as the cadets.
Hey Dale.
Yes, sir.
Not a question necessarily, but the audio is a little weak. I'm not sure where your microphone is located, but it's muffling, so.
Okay, this better?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm on earbuds, so I've got my microphone in wired. East elevation, what you see here, I mean, if you walk up here now, this is pretty much how it looks with some construction fencing around it. For those, this is a shot taken from basically Prose Hall. This is the brave site of Padius Prose, just to give you an idea, but it's a new entrance from this that will make it a little easier for the cadets to get in and out at real time. This is the entrance from the north as you come down from barracks and gray ground moving towards Prose over here in the future again. This is the 1918 building and then 1955 addition. This is an expansion. A lot of people are gonna look at it and go, yeah, I don't see the difference. It looks like BMI and honestly, that's what we're going for. With the growth in the core to seventeen hundred, these are our large departments. There's six departments in here. Literally those everybody takes the large programs, even if you're in the STEM program, all cadets are passing through this facility. So this is, this is a great addition to the capabilities that we have here on post and both faculty as well as the cadets.
Hey Dale.
Yes, sir.
Not a question necessarily, but the the audio is a little weak. I'm not sure where your microphone is located, but it's it's muffling, so.
Okay, this better?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm on earbuds, so I've got my microphone in wired. East elevation, what you see here, I mean, if you walk up here now, this is pretty much how it looks with some construction fencing around it. For those, this is a shot taken from basically Prose Hall. This is the brave site of Padius Prose, just to give you an idea, but it's a new entrance from this that will make it a little easier for the cadets to get in and out at real time. This is the entrance from the north as you come down from barracks and parade ground moving towards Prose over here in the future again. This is the nineteen eighteen building and then nineteen fifty-five addition. This is an expansion. A lot of people are going to look at it and go, yeah, I don't see the difference. It looks like V M I and honestly, that's what we're going for. You want to make it look like it belongs. So hopefully when the alumni come in and look at this, this is what, that's the kind of reaction we're looking for. The Chessy Nature Trail, important to us, but also very important to the community. This is a two million dollar project. I will show that is a funding that's come from the area. There's been local contributions to that as well as federal funding. It's to put the bridge, replace the bridge at the South River. The engineer was Riley Wilson, Brown Williamsburg and F and B contractors, Brown Bedford. And this replaces the washed out bridge at the South River and allows the two ends of the trail to be reconnected. Projects underway, it's twenty-one percent complete. Looking at completion this summer. Hopefully earlier this summer, we're looking through a number of issues with Dominion and Bush. This gives you an idea of what it's going to look like. It's going to, this is the this is the west end of the trail comes from Lexington here. This is the bridge abutment you see there connecting the end over to basically Hollins property. This is a good idea what the bridge will look like when it's completed. Lot of interest here. We're hoping, looking with the county, when we do a ribbon cutting, it'll be community event. Construct Lackey Park Parking. This is a three and a half million dollar project that V M I is funding. Spectrum Design and Atkins Excavation. It's a new three hundred and eleven car parking lot out at Lackey Park. Lackey Park is the area out by the high school. National Guard Facility and I'm sure you can put your name in it. It's forty percent complete, looking for completion this summer. This is important because this is the cadet parking lot that we're constructing. The intent here is to relocate all the cadet cars to this one location from now and from main post, but also the ones that are in all these parking lot. It gives the cadets a little bit more security, but also solves mostly a lot of parking problems. To give you an idea what it looks like, where the high schools up here in the corner with the guard facility, Heinz Lane leading down to Physical Point Facility, Hinton Hall. So it's up on this hillside. We drive down past the school, you can look out at the hillside and see the work that's ongoing. Come in to Heinz Lane, major turnaround here, but all the cars and parking. Core physical training facility phase three. This is the aquatic center. This is a forty-four million dollar project. It's a combined private fund with state funds. H K S is the architect and writing team is the contractor. This is the same team that did the physical training facility phase two, the track. It's a new roughly fifty-nine thousand square foot facility. You'd be surprised if everybody doesn't know, anybody doesn't know this is on me. It's right there on Main Street. Final completion is fall of twenty-two. What we're getting out of this, the use of this is really, really flexible, which is always a challenge that we have from the state is to make maximum use of the facility. So physical education, all our cadets go through swimming classes. Mandatory. And then there's this whole series of elective classes. Then there's cadet water training, club activities from scuba club on. And then R O T C, they run the junior shields buds program and marine corps and others. So there's a full series of R O T C training programs that will be conducted in in this facility. So we're really seeing, you know, wide range daytime and weekends and then N C A A. Obviously swimming, diving and water polo are all being happening in that one facility. It is a fifty meter, a full-size Olympic lane. We have seven competition lanes. I'll show you a picture here in a minute with diving areas, elevated platforms and seating for almost six hundred people. So big change to what we have now, a lot more capabilities. This is a view from basically the purpose of the facility phase two, the indoor trap looking south on Main Street. Be standing with sidewalks down. This does connect into the Legion Building, Legion Building incorporated and connected with offices and classrooms in the Legion Building. On the inside, this is a view entered in from Main Street and from behind us. We're looking basically at the hill. This is the pool at the far end. You see the diving platforms, the diving well. The competition lanes of fifty meters are actually, you can look in the water and see that's your fifty meter lane to the two bulkheads and starting platforms typically run off the bulkhead. That allows us to separate the pool from the diving area, separate the pool into two parts. So diving practice, water pole and swimming can all be going at the same time. During the day, you could have, right now, we're very limited. We're going to run one swim class with the E. They'll be able to run multiple swimming classes simultaneously. What's interesting is you see these lanes are laid out across, which is a fifty yard. And it's interesting that right now in C A Division one, that's actually how they compete, is fifty of them. So we're going to have a pool that not only supports today's competition, but should the competition change, we'll be able to swim the other way around. So big, big improvement in capabilities across the board for both academics, training and sports. Renovation of Fort 12th Parade, which is a superintendent's quarters. It's a two million dollar project V M I funded. Bobby Holmes is the design team. The general contact is to be returned and this is going to be put, this is out to bid right now. Renovates the existing facility. The intent is is spending a year of the new superintendent may arrives from it. Will be temporary quarters. While the facility houses. The expectation is by the summer of twenty twenty-one, it'll be completed. Post wide safety and security. This is a ten million dollar state. It's a ten million dollar state funded project. You can see down here, it's been appropriated for both designing and construction. We're waiting for funding approval from the state. So the design team, construction, we're yet to be selected. It puts a number of vehicle gates across post and it really enhances our building controls. Expectation of the construction will start. From a picture point of view, what we're really doing is the red dots, all these dots represent gates and this is actually a low scene wall. The intention is to create an inner ring and an outer ring. The inner ring and what are the few schools, obviously from a threat standpoint, we gather the entire floor twice a day. It becomes a real opportunity. So the intention is to have an inner loop that allows when we need to, to be able to close the gates and protect the floor and the cadets. Especially as they move back and forth between academic classes and the barracks. Based on needs for events that come up, whether it's a sporting event, a guest speaker like the vice president or senior military person that comes into post, we have an outer wing of gates that will allow us to close off portions of the post as needed to support those activities. And that's the intent. Renovation and expansion of the engineering laboratory facility. This is Nichols Engineering Building. You know, the core has expanded up to seventeen hundred cadets. STEM, science, technology programs have grown and populated almost sixty percent of the core is now STEM related. So we really needed to make, you know, this was renovated in the two thousand and four, two thousand and five timeframe. We really needed to make an expansion and renovate again. Just to meet the new demands. This is another one where the project has been appropriated for both design and construction out of state funds. We're waiting approval. We're selecting the A and E and the construction manager. And then expecting to start sometime in the fall of twenty twenty-two when the design's complete. It is a thirty-three thousand square foot addition and a complete renovation. So adding additional classrooms, we're adding additional labs. We're getting the opportunity to group or running along the existing space for efficiency to meet the demands for changing and growing program.
Dale, will the footprint of the building change with that thirty-three thousand foot expansion?
That's what I'm going to show you right now.
Thank you.
This is an aerial view, if you will, from the parade ground. You can see the football stadium here in the background and concept. So this area here is actually an expansion of Morgan Hall. You know, Nichols West, you can actually walk out on the top of the building, but when it was originally construction, it was constructed. It was designed structurally for an expansion to have added floors on top of it. So we're actually constructing in addition to Morgan Hall, expanding it out and actually building it over top of and committed to the main to Nicholas and June. All the existing buildings as well as Morgan Hall back here will be renovated. And also in this project, when the aquatic center will be completed, this is where, this is the project that will take down the existing clock hall swimming pool. And the cock hall annex pool that's back here behind Jane Hall, which opens up the vistas from the parade ground down to Main Street and the stadium and provides a much nicer and more capacity for pedestrian pathways. If you study the architecture and the history of V M I, this actually gets back to some of the original architecture where the views from Jam Hall and Memorial Gardens down to Main Street opens up the existence of it. A little bit of different view. This is a rest elevation. We're standing on Lecter Avenue. The Preston Library is just to your right. Breakup is to your left. This area here is the new addition. Two stories up on top of the existing structure, multiple stories behind catching me to the middle building. Again, just much like I said before, if you can't tell the difference, that's a good thing. Not all the A R B doesn't always like that. They want to see the difference between the new and old. From historic district, we have some requirements we have to meet in. Center for Leadership and Ethics Phase Two, Phase One being Marshall Hall, acting home of the tree. Phase two is going to be the leadership development facility. We've really expanded the leadership programs and civics programs on post. They're presently being taught inside the tree and other spaces around post. And rooms that were designed as conference rooms. So this gives us an opportunity to really step up the leadership and ethics program across posts, not only for the cadets, but it's also intended for both faculty and staff. What we have appropriated right now is for detail planning. I mean, it's too many, just over two million dollars. But this, if you understand the state process for detail planning, followed by final design working documents and construction. This is the first step in the state process to to fulfill fully funded project. Again, we're waiting state approval for funding. So we haven't selected the engineer or the construction manager. We're guessing, we don't know when the state will appropriate the money for construction, start date of twenty twenty-four. What we're getting out of that, you know, in this project is new lecture halls, more fitness, new classrooms to support the leadership program with some faculty and staff offices. We'll be moving the museum from back to Memorial Hall up to this facility. Which really connects it, there's a lot of, you know, our museum has really got a great teaching program. And this very heavily related to the leadership program and this gives us ability to supplement the leadership program. So it relocates our museum and expands it at the same time. Also makes the museum much more readily available for conferences, missions opening houses. Really giving prospective students an opportunity to visit without necessarily, you know, getting away from the events that they've already planned. The location for this on post, this is the existing Marshall Hall. This is Smith Hall. This is parade avenue coming around. So just off of that, trying to into at least the new facility. Kind of orientated view. Looking at it basically from that expanded area, I guess where the parking lot is now. This kind of gives you a front of view of what it might look like based on the concept. So again, very, very V M I like, but again, ties in a little bit. Close, very close to the existing Marshall Hall. The two will be connected with an inside walkway. So it's been part of this project also right now, if you come in to Jordan's Point and Mount Anderson Drive to the main post, you end up in a parking lot. So as a sense of arrival, if you come in that way, your first experience of V M I is entering the parking lot. So taking advantage of the the new bridge that's on Anderson Drive and expanded walkways that's come up through there. We've created a turning point. Now the buses can come in through that way or you can come into the main post. So you'll be able to do drop offs here. And you can see there's an expanded lawn area that goes down through this area here, giving us another expanded outward gathering space for cadets, for alumni, for other events. And really dresses this up. You're basically looking at this from the corner of the parade ground. That's what we've got coming in in the program. Again, I'm moving kind of quickly. As I said, Dallas and I used to do this routinely. Last couple of years, it's it's far enough, but I'm glad to be able to come down and show this a little bit. I would say that my sixteen years here, a short time, but the relationship between the city and V M I really come along, right? I think it's through these kinds of opportunities where we get to, we will clarify what we're doing. And answer questions. It's really a step that helps that process. That's my brief subject to any questions.
Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate you being here and the first observation I have is wow, with all the things that have taken place since two thousand and four and entering the pipeline. This time I'd like to open it up to city council members for any questions they may have.
Just one, Dale, you did mention that, I couldn't quite hear it. Do you go through A R B for these building projects?
We go through the state. Our requirement is we go through Department of Engineering and Buildings. For all our approvals, there are basically code officials and inspector, state fire marshal signs off on all of the safety systems. We go through department historical, D H R, historical resources. Especially in my case, because we are in historic district and we go through the state's A R B process.
Thank you. And I assume based on these projects, they're not, you're not planning on increasing the number of students?
No, there's nothing like that. I would, I would tell you that my opinion that we're pretty much at capacity and barracks, you know, ability to feed. And this is starting to catch us off guard. Maybe some additional classroom training and event space.
Thank you.
Other members of council. Dale, I'm not hearing any. I feel compelled to ask you at least one question. Again, thank you for for coming and providing the briefing. It's amazing all the construction that is going on at V M I and all the anticipated events, certainly once we get beyond COVID. A concern in the past and that I still embrace today is other than the lackey parking lot for the A concern in the past and that I still embrace today is, other than the lackey parking lot for the cadets. It doesn't appear that there's any accommodation for Cameron Hall, Municipal Training, or the Aquatic Center. BMI's ambitions for supporting and where they are directing their visitors for parking.
We're doing a parking analysis now, you know, just to kind of get an understanding. You know, because so much construction has occurred, what we have available on post and what our needs are. We're looking at two levels, we're looking at daily operations, but we're also looking at that mid level event. I think we're in the opinion that large events. Matriculation, graduation, football games, that there's just no way to construct in a parking other than use the parade ground. And so I think for those types of events, we brought into the parade ground. For admissions, open houses, conferences and stuff. In, when we developed the concept for the Center for Leadership and for Clee Phase Two. Leadership Development Facility, and I didn't share those pictures because it's not funded. But we have developed a concept for roughly four hundred and fifty car garage. And it's actually, you know, there was a couple items in that presentation. That that would hint it to you, but it would be right next to the Center for Leadership and Ethics Phase Two. And the challenge for us is the state doesn't pay for parking. And and there's just not enough room in cadet fees to pay for. Forty million dollar project, so. Concept of all, we know where we want to put it, we know what the cost will be. General Clark's working right now to try to figure out how we can go about structuring and finances to pay for.
Certainly you're not in the foundation office, but anyone listening tonight or joining on the Zoom call is welcome to make a contribution towards the. Endowing or the parking lot, which is always so desirable.
Yeah, it's funny, it's, of all the people who make donations, no one ever wants to put their name on a parking lot.
I'll give one last opportunity for council members, are there any questions while we have. Dale with us?
It's just helpful to understand how much, just the the scope of of construction since two thousand and three and. And and the amount of money that that has gone toward that endeavor is just remarkable as an understatement, but it's. It's phenomenal, so thanks, thanks for bringing us all up today.
Well, and I will say, I mean, for those who've been here and lived through it, there's, there's a lot of. Accommodation that's gone on, not only on BMI, but from the community, construction. It's messy at times, destructive at times, and we really appreciate, you know, the. The community's willingness to work with us to make it all happen in the long run and to get benefits and so on. For those who, you know, when I first got here, if you came into Lexington from the north, you came down the. North Main Street, you know, it was making its vehicles parked off road, the, it was chain wiring fence around the football field. It was very industrial, if you live out of today, it's, it's much, much different, it's a brand new engine, so. And I think it's, it's turning into a great gateway into not only BMI, but the city as a whole.
Absolutely, and I'll just remind folks, as I think Leslie was intending to point out. Local planning and ARB do not have any participation in the approval of the projects that BMI does, but they have a strenuous. Train or review process on the state level. The benefit to the city certainly is the multiple contractors who buy business license. As our professionals in City Hall make sure that everyone is properly licensed for the work that they're doing for BMI. And anytime there's construction, you're right, it's messy and everyone suffers somewhat. With the the chaos that ensues, and so our business community, we're very grateful for their patience and their tenacity for carrying on. Through the the messes that are made in the name of progress. And Dale, thanks again for being with us, please pass our warm welcome to new superintendent wins. Hope he's enjoying everything BMI has to offer and the city of Lexington and and General Clark as well, so thank you for being with us. Next item on the agenda is resolution honoring the former Buena Vista city manager, almost former. Jay Scudder's last day will be this coming Saturday, he informed us yesterday or on Wednesday, yesterday. But I offer the the following resolution of appreciation, recognizing the service of Jay Scudder. To the communities of Buena Vista, Rockbridge County and Lexington. Whereas William P. J. Scudder has served as city manager for the city of Buena Vista since two thousand and eleven. And whereas during Jay's term as city manager, he worked successfully with several Lexington city managers. And Rockbridge County administrators to benefit the city of Buena Vista and our region. And whereas during his thirty plus years of local government experience. Jay has served the communities in which he worked with great dedication, ethical leadership, and unwavering commitment to service. And whereas during his years of service in our region, he served on the local boards of the Rockbridge Regional Emergency Communication Center. Rockbridge Regional Jail and participated in many other similar activities. And whereas Jay contributed his time, energy and expertise to a number of successful ventures in our region. Including, but not limited to, locating the Regional Emergency Communication Center. Extending the Chessy Trail to Buena Vista. Implementation of the Rockbridge Area Network Authority and numerous successful projects in the city of Buena Vista. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Lexington City Council. I hereby officially recognize the contributions of Jay Scudder to the citizens of Lexington and our region. And be it further resolved that the Lexington City Council, on behalf of all the citizens of Lexington. Do hereby express to Jay Scudder, the council and citizens deep appreciation. For your dedication to public service in our region and the city of Lexington during your years of service. And be it further resolved that you go forth to hike the trails and high peaks of peace and contemplation. Fish in the pools and rushing waters of happiness and enjoy a well deserved next chapter of life. In witness whereof, Lexington City Council, this eighteenth day of March twenty twenty one, does hereby adopt this resolution. And this will be signed and delivered to Jay. Before he departs on Saturday to send him off with our well wishes and for a very successful retirement. Although I have a feeling Jay may find a retirement gig or two interim wise, but time will tell. He said his first order of business was to clean up his airstream and get it ready for travel when his wife retires in June, so. Our best to Jay. Next item on the agenda is the addition of five point four, the new business item, presentation of. The agreement with Friends of Rockbridge Swimming to operate the outdoor pool and have call on the city manager for introduction of that item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and members of the community. I'm sure most of council recalls and the community likely recalls that last spring as COVID emerged. We were all unsettled and not sure of what we were facing, that with the requirements in place. YMCA, who under contract was operating our outdoor pool, said. We don't believe we can operate under the requirements that are now in place. And we have enough on our hands just operating our own facility, so they said. We prefer not to operate the pool, maybe you can find another operator. At that point, the Friends of Rockbridge Swimming stepped forward and said, we'd love to give it a shot. We believe it could serve the community and at least provide some recreation and activity. Again, in those days when there wasn't much available to us in the community. Again, this year, we're still facing COVID, it's still with us. And very recently, the director of the YMCA said to me, Jim, if. The city council wishes, we could step back from operating the pool again. If there's somebody else, the Friends of Rockbridge Swimming would like to go forward and operate the pool. We still have enough to keep us busy over at the Y, and if it's the best thing for the community. We'd be willing to concede the operations to the Friends of Rockbridge Swimming again this year. So I did contact Ms. Joellen Schwartzman and Leslie Ayers, the director of the pool operations. Had a conversation with them, they said they'd love to do it. Not only would they do it at the same level as last year with the reduced requirements, restrictions that are now in place. They'd hope to expand programs and offerings to the community, and they are here this evening to. Make, say a few words, answer any questions from city council, and I would say that I certainly recommend that city council approve this agreement. Because again, there's going to be a level of activity that can be provided to the community that will enhance. What we're all dealing with in these still restricted days of COVID. So I would yield to Ms. Schwartzman and Ms. Ayers.
Joel and Leslie, are you with us?
Um, I am, I don't know whether you can hear me, right? Okay, this is Leslie. I don't know whether Joellen is here. All right, Joellen, you you take it.
Okay, last year, we felt that Friends of Rockbridge Swimming did a wonderful job for our community to be able to offer. Both recreation and lap swimming to members in a safe environment and complete compliance with. The governor's restrictions for pool use during the summer. We continue to be under restrictions in terms of the number of people that can occupy a lane or be in the pool at one time. And our online reservation system works very well for allowing people to schedule time to swim. In an affordable and safe manner, we would like to go ahead and re-implement that this summer and as. The governor lessens restrictions, we hope with more people being vaccinated and so forth, that we'll be able to expand our offerings to the community. That we'll be able to have more people participate in all of the things that are available at the pool, whether it be. Athletic swimming for students with our storm program or adults seeking lap swim. In particular, in the early mornings, when they can be, if we have people who. Have health restrictions, that they can be in a more isolated environment. And then also just for recreation swim for families throughout the afternoon and evening hours.
Terrific, thank you, Joellen, and thank you to Forest Swimming for picking the ball up last summer and certainly agreeing to do so this summer. I would ask at this point if members of council had asked for any questions for Joellen and or your consideration.
I move that Lexington City Council approve the agreement with Forest Swimming.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Alligood, a second by Mr. Ziegler, any discussion?
Just want to say thank you to Forest Swimming for stepping forward again and working with the city. It's nice to have a decision that's a no brainer in front of council to benefit the entire city and the kids and the families, and so. Just a lot of appreciation and hoping for eased restrictions in a safe way so that even more people can enjoy the pool this summer, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are new questions or discussion, ask for roll call vote. Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Alligood.
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler.
Hi.
Chris Ayers.
My sister is director of Forest Swimming and I, so I'm going to abstain from voting on this.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Strong.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
Motion carries five to zero with Mr. Ayers abstaining. Thank you all very much, and again. Appreciation of all of council and our community, a grateful community for the work that you all do at Forest Swimming and supporting our aquatic needs.
Thank you.
And we'll note, Leslie, knowing that you're attending many more municipal meetings, we did move you up so that you didn't have to stay for the.
I I did notice that, thank you.
Welcome to stay and join us for the remainder.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public hearings, we have a public hearing for consider and consideration on the agenda of the echelon proposal. For Spotswood, I'd ask the city manager to speak on this before we open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, at our last meeting on March fourth, we heard a number of comments, questions and concerns about this proposal. And after hearing those comments, questions and concerns, Mr. Gaskin amended his proposal, and so what you see before you this evening. For consideration and review is a ninety unit proposal, which of course cuts down on traffic and on vehicles and on scale of the proposal. And Mr. Gaskin has also submitted that he would. Instead of going through a planned unit development process, go through either the residential limited commercial zoning that's currently in place. Or the residential multi-family zone, and this further limits the scale of the project, so at maximum it would be forty five feet tall. And likely only four stories at that that height limit. During that time last week or last meeting, with all the number of questions and concerns that came up. I tried to prepare some answers for a number of those questions, and there are in the briefing about thirty four different points that I attempted to address. With assistance from city staff, including the police department, Department of Public Works, planning department and other fire department, et cetera. To address these questions and concerns, and I will say that in the very short time that staff and I had to work on them. We probably missed some of the facts or information that we could share, but at least we took a stab at that. Of course, if you haven't been able to see this in the briefing, these are online, if you cannot see them online. You can contact the city manager's office, the city clerk, Janie Hoster or myself, and we can share this with you so you can be better informed out there in the public. As we all know, this is an important project, it's also a very complex project, and we're not going to get all the answers. Tonight, we didn't get all the answers at the last meeting, but we believe we provided a number of pieces of information. That were different or expanded upon that information that we received at our last meeting. You do recall, of course, that. We had a cost benefit analysis that was presented last meeting by our finance director, Jake Adams. I think there's been a little tweaking of that, but I don't believe that's necessary to go through that this evening. I would however note that as a further information explanation of how this project was evaluated with this proposal. I want to reiterate information that may have been missed during our previous discussion. Some months ago, this process started a number of months ago, staff and I reviewed the proposal from echelon. And last fall, after a significant review, one of the things I did, because I was not, I am not a developer. I don't negotiate these types of projects on an annual basis or regular basis, I reached out to Timmons. And the Timmons group had worked with the city on the old VDOT site, it looked at our needs in housing that were in the Danter study. Looked at the economic development possibilities of that site, and they noted that housing was one of our top priorities. And so again, I contacted the folks at Timmons and said, we have a new proposal, a new site, could you take a look at that for me? And they did look at that proposal and look at the site, and they made a number of comments that I think were very helpful. First off, there are limitations on the site that I think most of us are aware of today. There's a lot of off-site stormwater that comes to the parking lots above the property, not from the property that crosses the property. There is a stormwater, excuse me, a sanitary sewer that goes through the property. The Pivano Building, if it was to be used for this type of use, would be a cost to. To remove that building, there'd be a substantial amount of grading and filling because of the contours and the elevations of the site. So there are some limitations on that site that any developer, including the echelon group, would have to face. However, there are a lot of potential. Benefits to developing on the site and. Folks at Timmons did point those out to me as well, because it does indicate that we can meet many of our goals for housing. They had, they noted that it was worth pursuing. Further, that the developer was well known for high quality projects, and he's the type of developer that will not walk away from problems or challenges on the site. So in that regard, we wouldn't be putting time and effort into this potential proposal and having somebody who at the first time. Concern or problem rises up, walk away. I would also note that the proposal does, and I've lost my place here, my apologies. I've got something on the screen that is not what I was looking for at this point in time.
One of the hazards of the virtual meeting and not the paper in front of us, while you're looking, Jim, request for the link to the document that the city managers referencing, and, and it's part of the city council packet that's online at the city website. And we'll see if we can get that link. I think it just was, so you can hit that link, and if you go into the chat feature, you can hit that link and see the entire document that you can scroll through yourself. The image in front of you is static and controlled by our clerk, so it's not something that you can go through, and we're not going to go through page by page this evening, but it's available if you are unable to utilize the link and would like a copy of the information the city managers speaking of, please email Janie at City Hall, and she can mail or have it prepared for your, for you to pick up or deliver to you via USPS.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for filling for me during that pause. The Timmons group also noted that while it may seem counterintuitive, many of the best proposals communities receive are unsolicited proposals. And the reason for that is the more knowledgeable, experienced firms look for opportunities, they do their research and homework, and they go to communities where they want to do business. Many other firms and other scenarios wait for business to come to them, and they basically propose the same project that they've done in other communities because they are just reacting to an opportunity. They're not really going out searching for new opportunities. They neg, they indicated that also, one of the common misconceptions is that the most important opportunity for the community is to get most dollars upfront for the property, which is not true. Basically, we're going to be building or seeing a project that will last for decades and will pay for itself over and over during the decades if it's a quality project. And it pays for itself not only financially, but becomes, because of its quality project, it continues to return value in many other respects throughout those years. So those are some of the things that I reviewed, further reviewed with them that the draft agreement itself, and what they said was the draft agreement looked good. There were no implications as to the price. There were negative aspects of the site that would cost the developer money. And that the most important things in an agreement like this were the details that would indicate the quality of the project, again, because it would last for decades, and to try and add instead additional details or agreements in that proposal that would improve the development on the site, that were in excess of the zoning requirements and excessive what we could expect from a project that, that met the bare minimums on the site. So that's what you have this before you this evening. And of course, we know we've also received several other competing proposals, and so I would further ask city council to carefully review the proposal from Echelon and Mr. Gaskin. I believe it's an excellent proposal that has been improved, and despite the proposals that have been received, I would still support, support this proposal from Echelon. Overall, we all know that city council will probably do their due diligence and also look at those competing proposals. That's what I have for city council this evening.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Jim. Do members of council have any questions for the city manager from the comments he made? Very good. Here, hearing none. I would suggest we move into the, the public hearing piece where we will hear from citizens first, in the order that we receive their desire to speak. We will be recognizing the three-minute limit for presentations from folks, and I'll read into the record that we welcome public comments and comments for public hearings. Ask that you state your name and address for the clerk for the record. The council as a whole, we ask you to be brief. Statements or supporting materials, get those to the clerk, and she can distribute them. This is not a time for debate, and council will not respond to questions that you may pose. And most importantly, we ask that you speak clearly as we want to hear what you have to say, and appreciate your taking time to address us. After the, the list of folks that are listed there speak, I don't have, I'm not aware of anyone other than that's printed there, and then we will go into the letters that council will read. So at this point, Leon Joe Henning, thank you for being with us, and I would say the, the floor is yours, and.
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak on this very, very important civic matter that affects the whole community. Winnie and I live on Jordan Street, a little less than a block from the cemetery, a little more than a block from the Piovano building and the Spotswood Park over there. My understanding Lexington government is organized both on a political and business model. The mayor and his council advised the city on political matters in the community. City manager tries to ensure that community issues are followed with, following good business models and practices. I'm gonna tell you a story. My wife and I own a fully aerobatic aircraft since 1995, stressed for five Gs minus two Gs up at Chano Valley. We're familiar with VFR and IFR instrument and visual flight rules. So to do some reconnaissance, I walked up on the hospital hill and visited the helipad up there and interviewed the pilot, the bayou nurse, and the crew member. I also learned that hospital helicopter crews have the second most dangerous job in the United States. They were incredulous that someone would suggest to build a heli, to build a high-rise apartment building in line with the flight path. The flight path of a helicopter is a right-hand pattern. In landing, it's reduced power, however, to takeoff is full power. If an engine would fail with 80 pounds, 800 pounds of J, Jet A fuel, it could only auto-rotate down into the green space where this high-rise is proposed. Secondly, his church where he goes on Sunday, members tell him, bud, you have woken me up at 2:00 in the morning. That is sound of a helicopter over our apartment building. City council will never hear the end of complaints. What are you gonna do? Get rid of the helicopter support for the hospital, or? So I suggest that the city council, please, I entreat you to accept Mr. Grigsby's offer to buy the Piovano building, use it for the current purposes, and provide barrel spaces and expansion of the cemetery for the dearly departed of Lexington. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joe Henning. Appreciate you being here and sharing those details and research that you provided to us this evening. Next, I'd like to get it myself. Thank you, Leon, for your comments and for the research that you did on the helicopter traffic. Greatly appreciated. Next is Ben Grigsby. Mr. Grigsby, if you can state your name and address for the record, and then we'll begin your time.
Thank you very much. Ben Grigsby, Lee Avenue, Lexington. Thank you very much. As part of the first public hearing, I wrote you about my many serious concerns that I had about the unsolicited Echelon proposal to buy Spotswood's approximately 3 and 1/4 acres for $350,000, including demolishing the Piovano building, effectively valuing it at zero. Many of these concerns remain. I still oppose the latest Echelon plan as being disproportionate, but my number one concern is the risk of major disruption to RAR, to RAR. Where are we now? To the benefit of Lexington, last week's second unsolicited proposal by Max Mark, Max Mark Homes, and practice launched the equivalent of an RFP procedure that I believe should have been launched at the beginning. I understand there are now six proposals. After learning of this change, and given my grave concerns about the impact on RAR and its clientele, this past weekend, I decided to offer an alternative approach with only one focus, namely creating a way for RAR to continue to have the Piovano as their base. So on Monday evening, I sent the letter, a firm bid to buy only the Piovano building and its .92 acres at a price higher than the two visible bids for the entire 3 and 1/4 acres, plus every other term was better than those of the competing proposals. My proposal would give RAR a flexible five-year lease and a free option to purchase the property while ensuring it would join and remain on the tax rolls. That letter, I would like to be added to the minutes, and I very much, of course, would like to ask that this proposal be given your full and fair consideration. However, things are moving very quickly, and the board of RAR now have unanimously determined that buying the Piovano building will provide them with a secure, a multi-decade home, and they've made their own proposal to the city to purchase Piovano. Let me be very clear. I will work with RAR in whatever way they find advantageous to accomplish there and my original goal, which is a secure future. This might include proceedings as I originally proposed, or potentially, number two, partnering with RAR, or three, even deferring or withdrawing my bid in favor of theirs to support them in any way I can. I have assured RAR that they will have direct financial support in whatever direction that they want to go. It's important to recognize that the separate sale of Piovano's .92 acre still leaves the city with a very valuable 2.3 acre block of land suitable for many purposes. This is precisely the same block that the city wanted to sell only nine years ago. The notion that the two blocks can only be sold together or simultaneously is simply wrong for me. They each have real value, and in RAR's case, that value goes far beyond just dollars and cents. I have a siege council to the council to defer any action until a proper set of criteria and an open and fair process can be defined, with enough time to allow alternatives to be properly crafted and evaluated, mindful that the more than five months Echelon enjoys to negotiate with the city. Thank you.
You timed that very well, right on the, on the buzzer. Thank you very much for being with us, sharing those, and for the pending offer that the city will be considering. Next is Heather Hamilton.
Hi there. I'm Heather Hamilton. I own H&amp;K Properties on Lexington Street. And just for the record, the last time I spoke at city council, I was representing Rockbridge Highlands Realtors as the 2021 president, and the letter that was submitted was from the board as well. Mary Beth Harris will be speaking on my behalf for RHR, so I can speak as owner of H&amp;K Properties, a professional property management and real estate company. Of the proposals submitted by Echelon and Max Mark Homes, clearly the proposal for 40-plus townhomes is more in line with what the Lexington area housing market desperately needs. We don't have the industry or work to support one- and two-bedroom apartments in the $12 to $1800 range, and even at the scaled back 90 units, it's still too many. There are not 90-plus new $60,000 jobs coming to the area unless there is something on the horizon I am not aware of that would allow young professionals to afford 12 to $1800 a month in rent. In my experience, the Echelon rentals would end up having Washington &amp; Lee and VMI parents renting them so they can come and visit on weekends, parents' weekends, and allow their students to use them. They will not be registering their vehicles in the city. They'll stay registered in the states in which they live. Max Mark's proposal will allow for affordable housing for first-time homebuyers and people that want maintenance-free living, which is much needed in the area. Ask any Realtor. The sale of those homes will create an increase in real estate tax revenue as well as personal property tax revenue. Clearly, city council needs to research what is the best use of this space and what will bring the best tax revenue if that is their goal. In my opinion, the Echelon proposal is not going to bring in the projected personal property tax revenue as prepared by finance director Jake Adams, but it is possible Max Mark Homes proposal would. As with any new construction, bridges, surveys, roads, et cetera, you ask the experts for their guidance and direction. You have an engineer design a bridge. You have an architect to help you build a house. The survey company do a survey. In this instance, city council should be looking at the experts in housing, which are the Realtors and property managers in Lexington. With almost 15 years in the Lexington area rental market, I feel like I have experience in the property management market, can tell you what rentals are needed in the area, and any of my fellow Realtor colleagues can tell you what the sales market needs. I would highly encourage city council and city manager to consult with the experts before making a final decision on any of these housing proposals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heather. Appreciate you being here and sharing those observations and making those invitations. Next is Valerie Malaterno. Valerie, if you could state your address for the record, and your time will begin.
Okay, I live at 523 Jackson Avenue in Lexington, and I'm here as the president of the board of RAR. First, I want to thank Mr. Grigsby very much for his support, and just echo what he said, that the statement I'm about to give has the unanimous support of our board of directors. After a lot of study, RAR believes the Piovano building is an excellent long-term home. We have a lot of community support, and as such, are now in a position to negotiate the purchase of the .92 acre lot and the building. Staying in Lexington is key to our success, and we believe staying housed in the Piovano building is the best, most efficient option for delivering essential services to the community. With extra space in the former garage area, we will be able to upgrade our food pantry and offer a better experience for our clients. In addition, we're open to discussions with both the community table and the electoral board to keep them housed there, and intend to use the former dining room as collaborative space with community organizations. This options leaves 2.3 acres available for the city to sell for development, as per the president said in 2012. We ask that the council give serious consideration to this option, and we're prepared to start negotiating terms, one being that the property stays on the tax rolls. RAR could also support other proposals that would keep us housed in the Piovano building. Thank you.
You're muted, Frank.
Thank you. Fun, fun juggling. Thank you, Val, and, and thank you for the good work of your board. Next speaker is Lee Merrill, and Lee has indicated he does not wish to address council this evening, so we will go directly to Elizabeth Betch. Elizabeth?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council for the opportunity to read this letter. Dear Mayor Friedman, on behalf of the Board of Directors of Historic Lexington Foundation, HLF, I'm writing to you and to members of the city council in opposition to the proposed sale and development of the site on Spotswood Drive that includes the RAR building. While not in the Lexington Historic District, the proposed apartment complex would dominate and visibly impact Lexington's historic neighborhoods. This would be particularly true with respect to the historic Oak Grove Cemetery, one of the most visited sites in the city. Approval of the sale and site development would also require a change to the city's well-established zoning regulations and could set a precedent for other development proposals. While HLF understands the revenue needs facing our city, we would urge you and the city council to reject the proposal today in favor of further discussion and review, as well as input from residents and organizations like ours. Thank you for considering our request, which is made in the best which is made in the best interest of the historic and unique character of our city. Sincerely yours, Larry Stanton Weiss, President, Historic Lexington Foundation.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I appreciate you representing Historic Lexington Foundation, and thank you to that organization for the great work they do in support of our historic city. Next individual is Martha Eckdahl. Ms. Eckdahl, if you'd like to go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Martha Eckdahl. I am a resident of Rockbridge County. I consider myself the target demographic for Echelon's plan for 90 apartment homes, and I'm a community member who has emotional attachment to the Piovano Building. I understand that it will be nearly impossible to sell this land to Echelon with the condition of protection for the building. What I argue for instead is the city's equal responsibility in helping house new and current residents while also ensuring there's a place for them to meet and find resources. I live in the county on a property formerly occupied by my deceased mother. The amount of work required to simply maintain it, much less continue the mortgage, is too much for me, and I plan to move. A one-bedroom apartment home would be perfect. An apartment downtown would be even better. More apartment homes would mean that I have more of a choice. With more supply comes stable prices, and I already frequent many of the downtown businesses for my needs. Kroger, CVS, Make-It-So, Pronto, and many more. Living downtown would significantly cut down on car trips for me and traffic for the town. This desire to live in a walkable area is not exclusive to me. Building in cities and even outer excerpts has focused in the past five to seven years on areas where at least a few errands can be accomplished on foot. Short Pump near Richmond attempts this environment, as does the area near Trader Joe's and Costco in Charlottesville. Lexington is uniquely poised to offer this kind of lifestyle to all manner of future residents, from young professionals like myself and an almost-forgotten group, retirees. My great aunt and uncle fit this latter demographic. Longtime county residents, they moved into town as they aged. First to a two-story apartment in General's Retreat, then when the stairs became too much, a home subdivided into apartments on Main Street, before finally settling into a mid-rise apartment with healthcare built in. They needed choices, just like everyone does, and providing more choices is what is available when 90 new apartment homes come downtown. The world has changed from a linear path of living in one or two cities. These paths vary now, and Lexington needs to be prepared to serve these needs. Now to the Piovano Building. As I mentioned before, the city cannot necessarily make its permanence a condition of the sale to Echelon, but the city can put in the effort and dedication to support RARAWA and its efforts to find a convenient new home where residents can be served, where community groups can gather, and where the inestimable bonds that draw neighbors together can be continued. The city must confront their responsibility to this community, not by blocking the sale of land to provide homes for future community members, but by concurrently making room for new residents while executing a plan to serve the community members already here. A town cannot survive without new residents, and a town that does not take care of its own is destined for a similar fate. Thank you.
Martha, thank you for joining us and for sharing the perspective. Very insightful. Next speaker is Mary Beth Harris. Mary Beth, if you could state your address for the record, and your time will begin. Mary Beth, I think you're still muted, or?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Apologies. I actually live in Stanton, Virginia at 125 Fayette Street. However, I am here on behalf of the Rockbridge Highlands Realtors as the 2020 past president. First of all, I'd like to clarify that while the Rockbridge Highlands Realtors Board of Directors tries to represent the viewpoints of its membership in entirety, sometimes there's dissension among members, as I'm certain council is well aware. And it is our intent to and responsibility to represent the majority viewpoint of our members. Based upon emails sent out throughout this time of discussion, the overwhelming response was not in favor of a City Council vote without substantial research, including but not limited to feasibility studies regarding traffic disruptions, changes to infrastructure, stormwater runoff, and implications to changes within the neighborhood. We as Realtors certainly see the daily challenges that the lack of affordable housing presents in Lexington and its surrounding areas. We are certainly not in opposition to creating more opportunities in the community for people to live. We are expressing our concerns as community members and business owners about the appropriateness of the location to provide safe, cost-effective, and efficient housing without significant study. The burden of such studies should be incurred by those presenting the proposals and not the city. We request a third-party, non-biased appraisal of the value of the property before settling on a price. We also request that other vacant lots within the city be considered as building sites. If increased property tax revenue is the end goal of the council, it would seem that the potential negatives regarding increased traffic, infrastructure, and utility expenses should be strongly considered. We urge you to consider the proposals before you very carefully. As Realtors, we're experts in the housing market. I'm sure most of you have used a Realtor to buy, sell, or even rent a property. You've trusted us with possibly your most valuable and expensive purchase. You did this because we represent your interest. We know the housing market, and we think it is important for you to receive our input on what housing is actually needed within the area. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mary Beth, and appreciate you representing your organization so well. Next speaker is Robin Youngblood. Robin, if you could state your address and for the record, and your time will begin.
Yes, I live at 104 Houston Street. My husband and I moved in here 13 months ago, and where the apartment complex would be directly behind her backyard, we're rather torn about this project. Because prior to moving in here, we had spent a year and a half living with my parents while we looked for someplace we could afford to live. That being said, I think the rents they're expecting to get are rather high. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for being with us and participating in the dialogue. Bridget Kelly Dearing, I understand, has joined. And Bridget, did you want to speak to Spotswood this evening? Or is your letter okay for the future meeting? Maybe Bridget didn't make it on. I would thank all the speakers for joining us and hope it was a reasonably pleasant experience. In this virtual world, things have been unique, to say the least, and we've had a lot of emails and letters that we've read into record. But we do encourage people to join us by Zoom and express themselves and share their thoughts and perspectives with council. For the folks that chose to write in, we have quite a few, and I will call on Ms. Alexander at this point to begin reading these into the record.
Thank you. Dear Mr. Glazer, it has always been our understanding since we moved to Lexington in 1972 that this property in question was to be used for the cemetery expansion. This property is located right across Spotswood Drive and the extension of Spotswood Drive up to Houston Street should not cancel that intention. The present cemetery is filling up rapidly, and there does not appear to be any plans or options for further space anywhere else. It has never made any sense to us why there would be any other consideration for this land but as an extension of the cemetery. Our neighborhood is a nice place to live, but we are rapidly being squeezed out by doctors' offices, public housing, and medical offices. These continue to drop the value of our property as well. Senior citizens need to know if there is no place for them to plan to be buried in Lexington now. What is wrong with considering other land places like the property across from Lexington Prescription Center, the land across from the Maury River Middle School, or land on the bypass? Thank you for hearing our concerns. Steve and Ruth Koiner.
This letter is from Bruce Schweitzer. Bruce Schweitzer says, Bruce Schweitzer here, Matthew Giannini's partner. I am sure you're having a busy day, so I'll be brief. First of all, I am not opposed to the responsible development of this property. Rather than go over the myriad of problems I have with the contact and the project itself, I would just like to point out my opinion on the following. Under Seller's Obligation 3.1D, it states that "decorporate and cooperate and support any subdivision, rezoning, conditional use permit, and/or zoning text amendment applications" that are being prepared and submitted by the buyer. Given that this project will have to go through the Planning Commission, it puts the city in a position that they are contractually obligated to support any proposal, however reasonable or unreasonable, made by the developer to the Planning Commission. In addition, there is a serious lack of specificity in the contract, as I believe there is no mention of the proposed number of units in the contract itself or any exhibit attached showing what the developer is actually going to present for approval. Yes, I'm aware of the conceptual that are out there. This contract obligates the city to support something that is currently undefined. Frankly, I find this ridiculous and could very well expose the city to a serious conflict of interest, or worse. I am curious as to whether the city attorney has fully reviewed this contract. Regards, Bruce Schweitzer.
After reading about the other possibilities in this week's News Gazette, I would really prefer RARAWA remain in the building on a permanent basis. The location is good for the community, and I think other community-based services could be added. So I am in favor of selling just the building and selling the remaining property for development. I think this is a good compromise for the citizens of the city/county, as well as adding tax dollars for the city. Also, I would like to know at what selling price for housing does the city consider affordable housing? Georgia Pippen.
A letter from Robert Volmerhausen. Dear Arnie Glazer, thank you for your letter dated February 18th about the proposed development of new apartments on the Spotswood Street site owned by the city. My only concern would be increased off-street parking. As it is now, Houston Street is narrow and somewhat congested with people parking in the street. This is especially true between Spotswood Drive and Route 11. So I hope that the planning department will impose certain restrictions on the development if it is approved, so that there is sufficient off-street parking for all new residents. There should be plenty of parking spaces planned along with the residential units, and residents should be encouraged to use those spaces. With kind regards, I am Robert Volmerhausen.
From Gail McLeod, Mayor Friedman and City Council members. Overall, the Spotswood proposal seems too intense, the equivalent of nearly 50 units per acre, 150 units on 3.2 acres. Housing development in the area is probably around eight to 10 units per acre. But if you are leaning toward approval, I suggest some precautions. One, have some specific design requirements. City ordinances don't permit design approval, but as you own the land, you can impose contractual obligations. Note the pictures of examples in the Feb. 3 PowerPoint very significantly. Some pictures show cool buildings with balconies and other similar features. Others are featureless buildings. See the pictures from their presentation below. Two, the affordable housing statement is illusionary. If you're serious, I have an inclusionary requirement that 10% of the units be affordable to those making no more than 120% of median income for the family size. What happens when he finds out there isn't a market for this many units? How are the parameters governing changes to the land use and design? Will the zoning allow commercial? Will you have the power to approve/deny changes? Has he shown you a market analysis? Remember threshold houses that wouldn't sell? Or how the subdivision at Richardson Park? Oh, and there's that Buena Vista Golf Course. Don't assume that when city plans say we need more housing, that it's true. No housing needs analysis. No housing needs analysis has been done in this area or the region. As a way of background, in my prior life, I was a planning consultant who worked closely with cities, writing ordinances with and with developers going through plan review. I was also on the Lexington Planning Commission for several years. Hope these comments help. From the third PowerPoint, she has an illustration of the building she described in her letter. But is this what they showed as representative projects, interesting architectural features? And she has some more pictures. Gail McLeod.
From Susan Minor, mayor. My husband and I moved to our home on Ross Road in Lexington approximately 18 months ago from Nashville, Tennessee, where we had firsthand experience with the consequences of rapid residential expansion. And so we greatly appreciate the walkability and historic charm of Lexington. Although we are relatively new residents, we understand how important RARAWA's services and its location in the Piovano Building are to the community, especially during the pandemic, and their needs should be a primary consideration of the City Council. Frankly, I was surprised that the City Council was considering selling the property without a plan for this important community service. I was also concerned about the sale price for the number of acres under consideration. A price of $350,000 is much too low to be fair market value unless it is for an option for the developer to purchase the property after zoning approvals and/or necessary feasibility studies have been done. No specific data was provided at the recent City Council meeting regarding the need for the proposed development, its environmental impact, or the cost to the city for additional infrastructure, police, fire, rescue services, and traffic regulation compared to the potential tax revenue, especially if the apartments end up being short-term rentals. Is my hope that the City Council will postpone any decision concerning the sale of the Spotswood property to Echelon until more detailed information can be provided and the local residents have time to consider it as well. Thank you for your consideration. Best, Susan Minor.
This is from Patty Higgins. These comments are in direct response to the Agenda Item Report that I assume was prepared by Jim Hollis and city staff. Item number two indicates that consideration was given to a number of factors that add to the cost of developing the property and arriving at the $350,000 figure. However, the cost analysis indicates this is $274,005 less than the value of the property, and thus would be a loss for the city. A question allowing that much of a difference because the property will present challenges to the developer. One of the items used in the consideration was the cost of relocating the sanitary sewer, although per the contract, half of that cost will be borne by the city. Item number three. There is no indication that increased traffic will have significant negative impacts. How was this determined? Is there data to back up this statement? Is there a comparable situation that can be cited as proof? Four accidents at Houston and Spotswood. I think four accidents at a residential intersection in two years is significant. There is bound to be an increase in traffic from having 90 more residences in the area. Would a four-way stop sign be added to the intersection? Item number four. Speeding in the area is regularly monitored. Years ago, the automated speed monitor was sometimes put on Houston Street, but I have not seen it in years. Very rarely, a police car will park on the street. There is no regular monitoring. If someone questions whether cars go well over the 25-mile limit on Houston Street, I invite you to come sit on my front porch and watch. Item number five. What nearby schools are children walking to? My children regularly walk from our house on Houston Street north on Spotswood to Laverne Downing Middle School. Item number 26. The one certainty being, any developer who would otherwise choose to initiate such a proposal would now think twice about doing so. Nobody wants to do business in a community where your initiative and hard work are often ignored. What exactly does this mean? Are Mr. Hallis and the city saying that developers will be run off because taxpaying citizens choose to ask questions and make comments about a proposal that by anyone's standards will bring significant changes to the area where they live? Item number 32, this proposal will generate no significant increase in stormwater discharges or impacts. There is no, there is currently no significant stormwater problems on-site or in the immediate area. What is the documentation and proof for this statement? Did an engineer determine this, or is this the opinion of city manager and city staff? In addition to the above items, I feel obligated to comment on the overall tone of this document. Given that this document is prepared for city council and available for public review, there is no reason that it should include condescending sarcastic or snarky comments. There are several statements that were unnecessary to be included, such as the last sentence in number five, the last sentence in number 12, the last sentence in number 20, and especially the last two sentences in number 26. There is also irony in the fact that while Mr. Hallis and city staff indicate that the public interest in this project will certainly make any developer think twice, it is noted that it is noted at the end of the document that another proposal has been made by Max Mark Homes LLC. According to the document, this proposal was provided on March 11th, so there was very little time for a comprehensive review. Even though that is the case, Mr. Hallis's final recommendation is that council accept the Echelon proposal. It should also be noted that the cost analysis given in this packet for Max Mark Homes LLC assumes that the same occupancy rate, 1.25 per unit, as the Echelon proposal. Given that the new proposal is for three- and four-bedroom townhomes versus one- and two-bedroom apartments, this is an inaccurate assumption. The benefits for the city listed in the cost analysis for Max Mark would be significantly increased if an accurate occupancy rate was used. Inaccurate information should not be provided to city council, and I will assume this was not done on purpose in order to affect the total cost and benefits cited in the document and sway council's decision. With all of that said, I feel this property should be retained as green space for the city, either as an expansion of the cemetery or small park, and that the Piovano Building should be upgraded and maintained for its current uses. Patty Higgins.
This letter is from Doris and James Varga. I am a retired Virginia teacher, and I know what all this development can do to the school budget, to teachers in the classroom, to class sizes, and the quality offered to kids. With 150 apartments, mainly housing families of childbearing age, you could estimate that there would be 75 to 100 kids that would enter the schools, estimating that half of the dwellers would have children. This would mean hiring at least three or four new teachers, costing the county, the city probably, about $200,000 per year, not estimating the cost of special services. Is the county ready to do this? Lexington did not put this property up for sale. It was not the idea of the council. It was someone else's idea. If it was needed and required, it would have been Lexington's idea. It seems predatory to me to have companies from other places and operate in their interest. This brings to mind, if it's not broken, don't fix it. Has it been discussed that this development would interfere with the emergency trips to the hospital due to increased congestion around that site? Trips to the main commercial artery, Route 60, for groceries, restaurants, gas, et cetera, as well as medical doctors would result in long lines of traffic, given that 150 apartments would increase the flow of traffic. The helicopter also would fly directly over these apartments on its way to the hill port at the hospital. The community effort at serving underprivileged patrons at that lovely site is something to be proud of. It would disrupt longstanding companionship. I'm trying to think of community impacts as well as my own interest being directly across the street. Doris and James Varga.
This message is from Kate Crossman on behalf of the Community Table Board of Directors. Statement from the Community Table for the Rockbridge area regarding the sale of the Piovano Building. The Community Table for the Rockbridge area assists with the growing need for food assistance among families in Rockbridge County, Virginia, and operates as a partnership between the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank, the Rockbridge Area Relief Association, and other area organizations. TCT serves meals from food that can be sourced from BRAFB, RARRAR, and other area donors. TCT has operated out of the Piovano Building on Spotswood Drive for roughly the past decade. Despite the pandemic, TCT reimagined how to safely distribute meals to community neighbors by establishing a drive-through takeout system incorporating the RARRAR facility. TCT believes the current location in the Piovano Building, its proximity to RARRAR operations, and flexible space is an ideal site for us to carry out our mission. We are in support of options that would allow us to continue to occupy that space. The Community Table Board of Directors.
I have a letter from Ross Waller. Good evening, councilors. I see that the city manager has again recommended that you agree to the Echelon proposal for the Spotswood property. I'm glad you did not jump at his recommendation last time, as it appears that you now have both an improved proposal and a competing proposal to consider. What could be the rush to accept this particular proposal? I understand that the developer wants to begin his due diligence in a timely manner, but I care a lot less about the developer's due diligence than I do about the city's due diligence. When one party pushes to accelerate the timetable and the other party is lacking complete information, it doesn't take a genius to figure out who is going to regret the deal later. And now you have a second proposal on the table. A deliberate thorough review of all aspects of both plans is imperative. Please exercise the highest possible degree of due diligence before signing any deal. To be clear, I am not against the city selling the Spotswood property to a developer. Furthermore, I do not think that the city should be critiquing aspects of the plan for their profit potential, as I have heard some suggest. The developer should be free to assess the risks of the investment he, she wants to make. At the same time, the city is responsible for getting a fair price and holding the line on objectively setting zoning restrictions, the recent revision of which I consider a great accomplishment. Due diligence for the city means evaluating the deal as a whole. A dollars and cents cost-benefit analysis is only one part of the responsible review, and in my opinion, it should not dominate the discussion. The reason it should not be dominant is that the impact on quality of life is at least as important. Any negative externalities resulting from large-scale development are borne by the community at large, and most often by the least powerful citizens. It would be irresponsible to ignore that fact. Thank you for listening, Ross Waller.
From Dennis Hawes. Dear Mr. Mayor, it has come to my attention that the Rockbridge Highlands Realtor Board of Directors plans to draft a letter opposing the Echelon Resources proposal. This is not the position of the general membership. The Board of Directors did not consult, poll, or survey the Rockbridge Highlands Realtor members. I, for one, support the proposal. I do not know the position of our membership anymore or less than our Board of Directors does, because neither of us have been consulted, polled, or surveyed our membership. But as real, but I guess that's an as, but as Realtors, it is our goal to provide housing, and I suspect that our membership in general approves of this proposal. The project target market tenant is young professionals and retirees. There has long been a need. There has long been a need housing for, I guess, for housing for young professionals recently out of college who are unable or not yet ready to purchase homes. Retirees often have substantial funds that contribute to the city but require few city-funded resources. An excellent city resident from a fiscal point of view. The current president of the Rockbridge Highlands Realtors has referred to the project as luxury apartments when I asked for an explanation of Board of Directors' opposition. However, none of the Realtors on the Board of Directors are turning away 300,000, 500,000, or other higher-priced listings. In the end, the market will decide if the markets are worth $1,200 to $1,600 a month. I want a monthly rent that is in the current average range of Lexington rental homes. I have served as chairman of the Buena Vista Planning Commission for several years. This would be a dream project for Buena Vista. In fact, we rezoned a couple blocks between Rockbridge and Catalpa Avenues to multifamily and homes of attracting a project to supply some much-needed quality apartments. Should the Echelon Resources proposal fail in Lexington, please them, please send them our way where they will be welcomed. Thanks, Dennis Hawes and RBA.
From Lynn Alexander to the Lexington City Council. Thank you for serving on our council and for the dedication of time and effort put forth toward the betterment of our community. It is also highly appreciated that you are actively seeking out the public's opinion before making decisions that impact the city. I currently have a standing commitment on Thursday evenings, so have been unable to attend any of your council meetings, but I feel strongly on this subject, so I am presenting my opinions through email. Before your next meeting this coming week, I wanted to add another vote that is not in favor of the current Echelon Resources Inc. and Urban Core Construction Plan. I concur with all of the negative impacts of this proposal that have thus far been presented to you. There is not a need for an apartment complex of this size or nature, and it goes against the motivations of why so many of us have moved to this city in the first place. A multi-story complex will be an eyesore and does not fit in with the atmosphere we have cultivated here. There are restrictions on the height of business or church signs, and a hotel proposal for over three stories was not approved. Why are we entertaining this idea, which is far more impactful and in the heart of a residential community? What about the proximity to the helicopter hangar? Will this building impact their work? Lexington has many properties that are in poor condition that could be revitalized and renovated into smaller apartment complexes. Why not incentivize construction companies to focus there? Our city is lacking in green spaces. Why take one of the few that are left and cover it with a building for 150 people that do not have jobs to offer, that we do not have jobs to offer? Displacing RARRAR would also be a big blow to our city. I am proud of the work done in that building, and it would be dismissive of their dedication of time and effort to remove RARRAR and leave so many community members without their services. I know it has been said that they will be moved elsewhere, but that is easier said than done. As, as we know, there are not spaces left in Lexington for many new buildings, hence the reason the Spotswood property is in this debate in the first place. Options that would enhance our city and keep some of the green space could include a dog park and a recreational facility. We currently do not have either of those to offer Lexington's constituents. I sincerely hope that the council does not entertain Echelon's current plan or even a scaled-down version of the same idea. Thank you for taking the time to read and listen to my thoughts and those of our community. Sincerely, Lynn Alexander.
This is from Patrick Ramy. Oh, I just wanted to take a moment to write to you briefly about the Spotswood property in advance of your next meeting. I know, of course, how quickly a loud and vociferous minority can hijack what's best for the city, and it appears from a distant vantage point that may be brewing on this issue. As I said in my last meeting on council, your job is to do what's best for all of us, not the loudest group in attendance. In that regard, development of the Spotswood property is clearly to the benefit of Lexington citizens, and I strongly encourage you to move forward. While I don't have the breadth of knowledge on the issue that each of you do at this point, I trust the city manager to negotiate a favorable position for the city. Regardless, development should proceed, and it's appalling that it has taken this long for progress to hopefully be made. The matter has been held up by a variety of bad plans in the past, dog parks, cemeteries. But this seems an excellent opportunity to do what's right and take some of the financial burden off us residential taxpayers. As the sole opposition vote on the matter, let me say unequivocally, this is not the same as the Kendall expansion. The only legitimate problem surrounding Kendall's expansion as the dissenting vote was the proffers and the manner in which they were made with the initial transfer of the property by the Bartonsteins. To my knowledge, no such issues exist on the development of this property. Thanks for reading. I do not envy your position, but I hope you'll do the right thing and support the development of the property. Best, Patrick Ramy.
This, this letter is from Pete Hamilton. Dear Ms. Hostetter, while I am a resident of Rockbridge County and not of the city of Lexington, I am concerned that the city is considering selling the Piovano Building and associated property, leaving RARRAR and the Community Table without a home. I recognize the enormous amount of good that these two agencies do for the citizens of not only the city, but of the county in Buena Vista as well. And I would like to add my voice to those urging the Lexington City Council to reject the proposed sale of the building. Pete Hamilton.
This message is from Fred and Julia Arnt. To members of the Lexington City Council, it is the main function of government to help us care for one another. Allowing the use of city property by RARRAR and the Community Table has enabled the city of Lexington to participate in that function in an unprecedented way. If the city no longer wishes to own the property, the most beneficial way for it to serve its residents and the residents of the county, of which it is the seat, is to allow the agencies providing services to purchase the property. We hope members of council will be concerned enough for all of us to accept the offer of purchase. Sincerely, Fred and Julia Arnt.
I have a letter from Ann Grimmer. Members of the Lexington City Council, I want to add my support to the proposal that RARRAR be allowed to purchase the Piovano Building, which they have been using for a number of years. RARRAR and the Community Table are providing assistance and hope to the marginalized in our city and county who rely on this organization to survive. RARRAR has been housed in other locations during the years, but this one seems to be better suited to meet their needs and is easily accessible for the clients. Thank you for thoroughly considering and evaluating the sale of the property before making a final decision. Ann Grimmer.
From Tony Williams. Dear council members and other interested parties, I am opposed to the apartment building proposal for all the reasons the public stated over the last several weeks. My outstanding objections are the following. Drawings of the buildings resemble those ubiquitous structures in Northern Virginia and other generic suburban sprawl areas. A mere three blocks from our historical downtown, the enterprise is not a good fit with our charming small-town image and vibe. The traffic noise and busyness will negatively affect the quiet neighborhood and area, including bringing concrete meaning to the term rush hours. What infrastructure expenses will the city incur, not counting the water, sewer, and electric lines? One or possibly more stoplight lights seem inevitable, and if it's even physically possible to insert another at Nelson Street. Will widening of Spotswood become necessary? What about the road's upkeep and repaving needs and the trees alongside it? With 150 more cars and only 150 parking spots spillage into neighboring streets and the hospital and medical offices will occur. What happens when residents have visitors and parties? With such with such a dramatic increase in rental product, what will become of the current rental properties in the city? I am currently aware of several unoccupied buildings. Will property values in adjoining neighborhoods be decreased? I know I wouldn't want to live near such a site. It seems like the city could take its time finding a more suitable match for the site. Who knows what opportunities could arise if the city actively solicited proposals? Let us not sell our soul for a quick fix resulting in an irreversible unwelcome and regrettable blight on our beautiful town. Sincerely, Tony Williams.
From Elizabeth King. As for my quick review of Max's proposal and the comments from the previous city council meeting, traffic was not addressed sufficiently. At full capacity, either proposal, Echelon, or Max Mark intend to bring around 200 people to that site. While I am not an expert on traffic, I lived in Lexington long enough to know that simply having that many cars in that area would be equivalent of presidential election voting traffic at all times, and the surrounding roads are not equipped for that kind of volume. The city's only comment regarding traffic was based on how many accidents happened at Spotswood, Nelson, and Spotswood Taylor over the past year. This did not forecast what would happen when the units were fully occupied and traffic increased exponentially. For either proposal, a real traffic study must be completed. For either proposal, a real traffic study must be completed. To simply look at what happened over the past year when traffic was down everywhere from COVID-19 restrictions and stay-at-home orders is inaccurate at best. Also, has anyone thought practically on the true impact of, of construction would be? Both projects, when complete, are dense, and both projects want this work completed in a relatively short timeframe, which means literally that hundreds of construction workers will be involved. What assessment has been done to see the impact of construction on surrounding streets? What assurances do we have that construction and all construction parking will not spill over onto Spotswood Drive? I think congestion and traffic concerns have not been adequately addressed, and cost-benefit analysis are inaccurate because road improvements will be necessary. How much would it cost to add a stoplight on Spotswood at Houston? Is this feasible? The city should know these costs, and before pursuing either proposal, the city must have funds available for this light and potentially another light at Spotswood and Nelson Street. If the city does not have the budget to add and maintain these stoplights, the city should not proceed with either development until there are funds available for the necessary road improvements. It is unfair to push this project through on the guise that will create additional tax revenue. $5 million over 20 years does not buy immediate road improvements, and it hardly covers additional road maintenance. Progress is good. Building something on this site is an interesting idea, but high-density housing on this track without immediately having millions of city tax dollars or VDOT grants from the Commonwealth that can be immediately set aside for this development raises taxes for everyone in Lexington. Let's be clear, this development by either Maxmark or Echelon will raise property taxes. If this development is really ripe for all of Lexington, city council should immediately vote to increase real estate taxes so money can immediately be set aside for the necessary road improvements. No one in Lexington should object to higher taxes because this is really and truly what Lexington needs, but saying this project can move forward in either iteration without increasing taxes is wrong. Elizabeth King.
From Lucy Lyons. I'm writing to express opposition to selling of the Spotswood Drive property for development. Lexington attracts families and retired couples. The notion that 150 units are needed at $1,800 a month geared towards singles would, who would relocate to Lexington to fill them when there aren't any jobs to employ such people is crazy. If Lexington wants to increase its appeal and livable qualities, it is important to keep the few green places it has. Cities that attract people to live in them have open green spaces. In many desirable European cities, every block has its own park. It encourages being active and social. Having more growing things and less asphalt improves the quality of life for residents. As a Lexington resident, I think Ra-Ra should stay, and a park with an outdoor pavilion should be built in this location. Sincerely, Lucy Lyons.
This letter is from Lotta Bailey. I would like to add my voice to those urging you to take time to carefully consider the option to allow Ra-Ra to purchase the Piovano Building. The location of the building makes it an excellent site to provide the very necessary service that Ra-Ra provides for the whole area, not just the city of Lexington. The layout of the building and the adequate parking available make it an appropriate location for the Community Table and other civic endeavors. The whole community supports both, Ra-Ra and the Community Table, and the whole community benefits. I urge you to carefully consider allowing the purchase of the Piovano Building by Ra-Ra. Sincerely, Lotta A. Ann Bailey.
This message is from Susan Young to Lexington City Council from a pre-pandemic Ra-Ra Monday afternoon volunteer at the food pantry. I write to voice my support for Ra-Ra being able to stay where they are, whether that is by their purchase of the building or through Mr. Brigsby's offer. The location is ideal for Ra-Ra, and so is the space inside for food storage and presentation. I always felt uplifted by my Monday afternoon experiences. Sincerely, Susan Young.
A letter from Tom and Brenda Maston. My husband and I have been volunteering at the present site of the food pantry for several years. Before COVID, it was the place where clients could go to the grocery store and pick out their own food. Since COVID, it has transitioned to be able to attend to their food needs and still keep the community safe. There is ample parking for the workers and also for the people seeking relief. This is the ideal location for, location for the pantry. We believe the community is best served by allowing Ra-Ra to purchase this property and continue serving the community as it has done for numerous years. Tom and Brenda Maston.
From Bruce McDonald. Dear Frank, I do not want to see the Spotswood Drive development go through as planned, even with lesser units planned. I object to it for a number of reasons. One, it is surrounded by historic properties, notably the Oak Grove former Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. It is way too big. Five stories will dominate the area and alter the character of the neighborhood. Three, it will boot Ra-Ra's building out of the area, which is established, popular, and deserving. It looks all wrong for Lexington to, um, too big, city modern. I don't, please vote no when the voting comes up. Many of us hate the project. Best regards, Bruce McDonald.
From Mary Newman. Dear Frank, I am very concerned about the Spotswood Initiative. The zoning would need to be changed. The demographic of the new tenants is suspect, and it will dwarf the surroundings. There are many other concerns, but it is not right for that location. Mary Newman.
From Ellen Satrum. Dear Mr. Glazer and members of city council, because you've already received so much specific feedback on the Spotswood project, I won't go into great detail here, but as residents of Houston Street just around the corner from the property in question, we too have serious concerns about the project and are opposed to it as it now stands. We fully understand the need for revenue and aren't opposed to thoughtful development, but this particular project seems ill-suited for our town and our neighborhood, particularly its disproportionate scale and likely effects on traffic patterns near the hospital, possible concern for rescue vehicles, and on the walking, biking route for many kids headed both to Waddell and LDMS. We also have a hard time envisioning a need for so many units. Thank you for listening, as always, with best wishes, Ellen Satrum.
This is from Alex Radzky. Dear Lexington City Council, please vote no on the Echelon Resources and the Maxmark proposals. It has become very clear that the Piovano Building should remain as the home of Ra-Ra and the various other community organizations that use the space. Quite simply, this is the best home for these organizations. I am encouraged to hear that there are now two proposals to buy the Piovano Building and the .93 acre parcel that it's on, with the goal of securing the site for Ra-Ra. I fully support city council working to make sure that the Piovano Building remains in the hands of organizations that benefit the community, especially those community members who most need their support. What to do with the other 2.3 acres? If you take the comprehensive plan seriously as a document, that is supposed to guide the city's development, the remaining Spotswood site is clearly not a place for a large residential complex. I urge the city council to follow their comprehensive plan and incorporating green development, innovating stormwater management, and open space into the redevelopment of the Spotswood Drive Opportunity Site. Clearly, filling the entire space with a large apartment building and parking lot is not consistent with the intention behind the comprehensive plan. City council must continue the community discussion that has been jump-started by the unsolicited offer from Echelon Resources. It is important to not commit to an exclusive offer without first exploring all the options and carefully weighing them. Within just two weeks of the previous city council meeting, three new offers have been received. I think there are other sides out there as well. This is a big decision, and the city must take its time in determining what is best use for this valuable property. For example, the comprehensive plan lays out a vision in which such decisions are made. Objective: Commit to engaging community members in substantive policy and decision-making to provide the highest possible level of service provision. C F 4.1 says, "Continue to seek citizen input on service needs," uh, and service needs and priorities to ensure equitable investment in infrastructure and facilities. Whatever decision is taken regarding the remaining 2.3 acres at Spotswood Drive, the key objective of engaging community members must be at the forefront of the decision-making process. The argument that the site has sat empty for a long time and that this is the one chance to utilize it simply is not true. The city needs to lead discussions and facilitate ideas and their implementation. If a group of citizens want a park and cemetery expansion, perhaps the government can give them an opportunity to raise the money to make that vision happen. If developers want to submit proposals for the site, I welcome the, those proposals as well. However, rushing the process and only considering one or two development proposals is not the way this process should work. Thank you very much, Alex Radzky.
This message is from Diane Herrick, addressed to members of Lexington City Council. From Diane Herrick, a former city council member for eight years, regarding the proposed Echelon Project on Spotswood Drive. I write in opposition to the proposed sale of city land for the Echelon Project on Spotswood Drive. The mass of the proposed 90-unit development is still overwhelming and not in character with Lexington or this area. Having spent eight years as the first director of the Main Street Program, the Lexington Downtown Development Association, LDDA, and later as an elected member of council for eight years, we worked hard to help Lexington continue to grow economically and at the same time to preserve the character of Lexington, which is at the core of what we all seek for our community, hometown America. The proposed 150, now 90-unit apartment complex in a prime location for young professionals does not fit in with the reason folks choose to move to Lexington. Young professionals come here because they want the quality of life which our small and welcoming community offers, as many of you chose to do. The oversized project, even at 90 units, is more like what my two children are experiencing in San Jose, California. It is upsetting in their setting and even more upsetting to envision here in Lexington. As a member of city council, we too had many contentious issues come before us, including a vote on selling the Spotswood Drive property. Since the sale of city property needs a supermajority of five votes, the measure failed. I read all the comments submitted after the March 4th meeting. Let me say, in my eight years on council, we never had the number of people in disagreement with actions council was contemplating. I urge you as the ones elected to look out for the best interests of the city, to please consider all the options, not only in terms of the monetary gain, but what is in the best interest of the entire community from a wide variety of considerations. With some new options now available, please give due consideration to these options and how one of them might serve the many goals for all the residents of the area. Thank you.
I have a letter from Eric Moore. Hello, I am offering a public comment for tomorrow's meeting regarding the new apartment complex. I'm a 27-year-old single male who recently got a job at VMI. I was very excited to move back to Virginia, my home state. I had a bit of a quick turnaround with my new job. I had about a month to find a place and get settled. I wasn't worried about this at first because I figured I'd just look at housing options and pick one that was at least close to my needs. What I soon found out, however, was that there was very, that there was virtually no housing options that met my needs. There were many opportunities to rent houses, and there were low-income apartment complexes. But there were virtually no options for apartments for a working, young professional, especially not in February. I became, it became very stressful to find a place to live, and I ended up having to go with an option that was more expensive and larger than I wanted. I was very disappointed with my experience looking for housing. I, for one, would be in favor of more apartment housing for young professionals, as my experience showed me how challenging it was to find housing in Lexington. Best, Eric Moore.
From Heidi and Bruce Schweitzer. The Echelon proposal requires a substantial investment directly by the city in the form of waived tap fees and shared infrastructure costs in addition to the sale of the Piovano Building valued at over $1 million. Given that the agreement appears to be justified by the prospect of future revenue, the city has placed itself as a de facto financial partner in the Echelon Project. While it's common practice for municipalities to offer incentives for development, in this case, it appears that the weight of the incentives is out of proportion to the possible financial risks involved. Either the city or the developer have completed a market study to justify the scope and scale of this project, nor have either properly addressed the issue of appropriateness for development on this site. It is our opinion that the city has placed too much emphasis on the prospect, not guaranteed, of future rest, of future revenue, distorting the typical developer-city relationship and processes. While we do not object to incentives offered by municipalities in general, we ask, has a full risk review have, has been, have been conduct, has a full risk review been conducted in this case? Additionally, we feel there should be greater transparency regarding the waived fees and participation in the cost of infrastructure. Clarity on the fee waiver on a per-dwelling unit basis would provide some of this transparency. We ask, how much is the per-unit fee waiver, and how is the hard cost per unit that the city would incur? On the subject of shared infrastructure costs, has the city manager provided counsel with an estimate of the city's share of the costs under this contract? Respectfully, Heidi Schweitzer and Bruce Schweitzer.
From Sarah Wyant. Janie, I, I agree with everything in the eloquently written editorial, much interest in Spotswood plans in this week's edition of the News Gazette. I urge council to reject the Echelon proposal. Sincerely, Sarah Wyant.
From Tamara DeValle. Questions for Echelon Resources. Your website shows that your previous projects have all been redevelopment efforts and historic properties. Is this your first from the ground up apartment, apartment building development? If not, please share information about those other developments, where they are located, size, challenges, overcome, current results, et cetera. Number two, have you completed any development projects that are not shown on your website? If so, where, where and what type? Three, have you had to abandon any projects for financial reasons or any other reasons? Four, would you be willing to give preference to local construction workers when hiring for this project? Five, who will handle the rental management of these units? Will you ensure that equal preference and opportunity will be given to all renters, regardless of race, color, ethnicity, sex, gender, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin? Six, do you have a previous relationship with our city manager who recently worked and lived in the South Boston, Halifax County area where you are headquartered? If so, what was the extent of that relationship? Has our current city manager made any recommendations to you regarding development opportunities here in Lexington? Seven, do you have an existing relationship with any city council members? If so, explain. Questions for other developers making offers. Number one, is this your first from the ground up apartment building, townhouse, single housing development? If not, please share information about those other, other developments, where they are, locate, where they're located, size, challenges, overcome, current results, et cetera. Number two, what other group, multifamily housing developments have you been involved with and in what role? Number three, have you had to abandon any projects for financial reasons or any other reasons? Number four, would you be willing to give preference to local construction workers when hiring for this project? Number five, will you handle the rental, who will handle the rental, sale, and management of these units? Will you ensure that equal preference and opportunity will be given to all renters, regardless of race, color, ethnicity, sex, gender, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin? Six, do you have an existing relationship with any council members? Or are you... Six, do you have an existing relationship with any council members or our city manager? If so, explain. Best regards, Tamara P. Duval.
This letter is from Debbie Pollard. Recommendations for city council members. The community needs to determine what we want on Spotswood Drive property for the long term. We should give sufficient consideration to the needs of our community economically, visually, socially, and culturally, and still align with comprehensive plan. What looks good on paper is not necessarily good for the long term of our city. We should not be driven by a single proposal or feel pressured to act hastily. In the interest of transparency, the city should put out a formal RFP with specific requirements. We must practice good governance by not appearing to show preference to a single developer. The economy is different from previous years. Interest rates are low. Council makeup has changed and we now have a comprehensive plan to consider. Offering a RFP at this time may bring better and more responses. Regardless of project chosen for this site, allow Ra-Ra to remain in the Piovanna Building. Moving Ra-Ra to another location would cause significant and unnecessary financial hardship for this nonprofit organization that provides a very valuable service to our community at large. It would put the financial burden on private donors. The city of Lexington has a vested responsibility to ensure Ra-Ra's ability to serve in such a central location. The selling price of the property is far too low. A true traffic study should be completed. Suggest not approving any proposal without first seeing a building design. Avoid rows of apartments, condos, or townhouses with boring flat fronts and placement without architectural interest. Will enough individuals be willing to live in an area near a hotel wedged in between a hospital with ambulance traffic, helicopters, and a cemetery on a high-traffic street to warrant making this project high-density residential? Consider the city's needs for affordable, middle-income housing as opposed to high-income housing. We should ask why middle-income Lexington employees are living in Buna Vista. Can we not afford, can they not afford to live here? Or do we not have enough quality, middle-income, affordable housing? If residential property development is approved, minimize the number of units. With general retreat planning growth, we will have an overabundance of high-density housing. The area is transitional. Consider involving mixed use with housing so that there will be an opportunity to adapt as the city's needs and the economy evolves. That is, small sandwich, coffee shop, office space. Require any developer to fund additional traffic lights or road improvements resulting from choice of project. End of letter.
This message is from Pam Grinder. Dear Ms. Hostetter and members of the city council, I wasn't aware of the importance of the Piovanna Building until I became a volunteer at Ra-Ra and learned how much members of our community depend on monthly visits to the food pantry. But the Piovanna Building is more than the food pantry. Lexington residents vote there every year and others look forward to the community table, master gardeners, community meetings, and events. It seemed ludicrous to replace the home of these much-needed services with an apartment building. And now that Ra-Ra is able to purchase the building, still leaving land for the city, what could possibly be a better compromise? Sincerely, Pam Grinder.
I have a letter from Louise Ward, Mayor Frank Friedman, and members of Lexington City Council. I am writing to request that city council adopt the alternate plan for renaming of city streets that is outlined along with the citizens' petition and to not adopt the policy that has been proposed by the city manager. In November of 2020, city council adopted the comprehensive plan. The process leading up to the adoption went on for several years and involved numerous meetings and public forums, both in person and later virtual. A consulting firm was hired to assist with the process. The Historic Resources Chapter alone involved much discussion and work. One of the strategies of the Historic Resources Chapter states, HR four point four, welcome citizen initiated requests to rename streets linked to the Confederacy and enslavement of people. The policy proposed by the city manager does precisely the opposite. It acts as a deterrent in numerous ways. The charge is prohibitive. Only property owners are allowed to suggest renaming rather than renters or other citizens. The proportion required for yes votes is excessive and the city manager would act as a gatekeeper. I would like to ask how many thousands of dollars the city paid to the consulting firm, our taxpayer dollars, and how many hundreds of hours of staff and citizens went into the development of the comprehensive plan? You were so proud of it, you applied for a reward. Why now are you ignoring an objective and strategy of the plan? The history of Lexington is complex and city council needs to deal with it in an intentional fashion. You showed this when you voted to change the name of the cemetery. Now, please continue that work. Read and adhere to your comprehensive plan and show positive leadership in the necessary process of street renaming. Thank you, Louise Ward.
From John Winfrey to the mayor and city council members, Ray Spotswood. John and I moved to Lexington in nineteen sixty-five. This is home. One of the many reasons we enjoy Lexington and Rockbridge County is the community integrity. People care about and for each other. This is one reason we support Ra-Ra's offer to purchase Spotswood. We can also endorse Ben Griksby's offer to purchase the property and lease to Ra-Ra. His arrangement would also extend community interest, integrity, and welfare services. We know Ben as a caring, community-oriented person interested in the welfare of all. Either of these offers would continue to serve our public good for all the people. You get our point that we are opposed to development as an apartment complex on any scale. Let's continue to enhance the city property for the welfare of all of our citizens, especially those who may be underserved. Thank you for all you do and for all of us, John and Barbara Winfrey.
Uh, thank you, members of council, and um, thank you citizens for uh, sharing that input with us. I can assure you that we uh, remain focused on listening and taking in all uh, comments, evaluating them and uh, in support of the decisions that council makes as we progress. Um, I understand that uh, there's at least one additional person um, who asked to speak tonight that's zoomed in with us, and that would be Jim Brown. Um, and I would call on uh, Mr. Brown uh, to state your address for the record and your time will begin.
Thank you, Jim Brown, living in Rockbridge County, but a PO bucks in Lexington and an owner of JF Brown Real Estate on Sixth East Washington. Thank you for uh, hearing me and for having this very important public forum. Uh, I'd like to know how the property was acquired by the city uh, in the old days. Was it gifted or provided to the community or to Lexington for expansion of the cemetery or community use? I've heard that for years, for decades actually, but I don't know that for a fact. I'm sure a title search or minutes from past city councils would reveal that and you've probably already gone down that road. But Ra-Ra and the community table certainly satisfied that goal to, goal, as did the rescue squad before that. The community is considering quality of life versus short-term gain and a sale at a fraction of assessed value. Has there been a recent appraisal? I contend that quality of life, even though I'm not a category on a balance sheet, is incredibly important to the economy. And the reason people want to be here, it's the golden goose, or at least it's one of the golden eggs. Don't drop it. As a real estate agent broker in this community for over thirty years, I have serious questions about this project, as have many of the other Realtors who were invited to comment to the Board of Realtors. Is there really the demand for these units? The high height of the buildings as a proposed and their visual impact on the area would dominate the surrounding community and be a threat to the hospital helipad, would they? And would that still be, would they still be allowed to fly by the FAA? I don't know if that's been addressed fully. The parking issues on site along Spotswood Drive and through the neighboring side streets. Can current owners and renters still expect to park without jockeying for spaces? The increase in traffic congestion and the impacts on foot traffic and safety, has that been considered fully? It seems that before there is any assurances for purchase, that the city must provide a survey, title work, and an environmental assessment. Should a higher non-refundable deposit cover these and any other items? It seems the five thousand dollar deposit is really an option to buy and a very low one at that. In my experience, these are traditionally costs a buyer would pay for their due diligence period, except perhaps a survey. It's one thing for the city to say water and sewer will be available. It's another to commit to paying fifty percent of those costs and providing it as the proposal requires. Without upgrades at taxpayer expenses, do the city and area really have enough water to be supplied in drought times for such a project? How about sewer? We don't need rate hikes for infrastructure upgrades to help a developer pay for this project. And lastly, can the developer just assign the contract? If so, to whoever they want, someone the city has not vetted? Again, I thank you for your time.
Jim, thank you for joining us and raising those questions and uh, direct you to several of those addressed in the, the packet information of the um, city council packet and responses by city manager. And if those don't satisfy, I encourage you to seek out the city manager specifically. And of course, council members are always uh, available for your and all citizens to reach out and share your uh, positions and uh, support. I'm not aware of any other folks uh, to speak at this public hearing. So at this time, at nine twenty-five, I will close the public hearing. I would recommend that council, uh, in light of the multiple offers, not consider the Echelon Proposal this evening um, and work towards under our new business discussion for how we move forward, acknowledging um, those uh, those four proposals that have come in in the past week to eight days. Next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes. And um, in your packet where the March four, twenty twenty-one regular meeting, members of council have any observations or details? If not, we will approve those as presented and we'll move directly into citizens' remarks and comments. I, I want to take a moment before we begin uh, this part of the, the meeting to acknowledge that at our last meeting, I had um, declared that uh, we would have a public hearing uh, on the uh, street renaming policy that's been in the works for uh, several months. Due to uh, administrative oversight, um, the uh, publication didn't get in the uh, mail, I'm sorry, in the newspaper and consequently did not make it onto our agenda. If members of council have any uh, points that they want to discuss on that, we can do so under unfinished business. But um, I will uh, assure folks that we will get it advertised properly and hold a public hearing on that policy on April first. Uh, and with that, um, I'm not aware of anyone that uh, wants to speak, but uh, we do have uh, citizens' comments that are included. Um, and I will call on Marilyn Alexander to begin the reading of those letters into the record.
This letter is from Patrick Hindley, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and city manager. No doubt, renaming all the streets now bearing names which glorify the lost cause is a right and good thing to do. But I must question how high a budgetary priority it ought to be at this time. I am unable or unwilling to justify the monetary outlay required to do so at a time when city, when the city is facing much larger and far more existential expenditures of absolute necessity within the foreseeable future. In my view, the costs involved for renaming streets would be put to much better use for more citizens and the future of the planet as well as the community by reinstituting the curbside recycling program or as much of it as can be made feasible. I look forward to the return of some rudiments of that program next month and I commend all who have had a hand in making that happen. Not to kick the Confederate can further down the road, but neither of your proposed plan nor the petition have I seen but not signed from Fifty Ways comes close to adequately addressing the processes. And more importantly, the nature and extent of the collateral damage the name changes would cause for all those whose addresses are on those streets, admittedly my own included. Changing the name of the cemetery was a no-brainer and I commend the city for taking the initiative and making that happen. Ideally, the process and procedures for changing, changing the names of the streets would be not only well-intentioned, but even more essentially well-fought out in advance, a process which takes time, talent, effort, and focus. It needs to also be nuanced so as to minimize the potential for negative publicity from within the city or outside. Not that Lexington is likely to be out of the crosshairs in that regard as long as we are rest, the resting place of Lee and Jackson. As long as there are Confederate, Confederati, those for whom the lost cause is tantamount to a third testament in their Bible. Respectfully submitted, Patrick Hindley. City of Lexington resident since nineteen eighty, property owner since nineteen eighty-six.
This is from uh, Dr. Eileen Hanks, city council. My schedule does not allow me to attend meetings since I am teaching in Stanton. I live on Stonewall Street. I do not want streets renamed. On my part, it's a practical reason. I don't have the time or energy to uh, be corresponding with every health insurance carrier, place of employment, credit card, and bank, and other financial agencies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And uh, lost my place here. With their, with financial agencies, uh, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to change an address. I'm sorry, but although I object to Confederate flags, I do not care if my street is named Stonewall, which nobody I know who lives in PA, Pennsylvania, or Massachusetts even knows what a Stonewall is other than a stone wall or whatever. It's easy to sign a petition if it's not your street or if you have plenty of time on your hands to be changing your address. Why don't you all spend your time and money on issues that really matter? People who are homeless and who lost their jobs and/or health insurance like I did in the spring and had to find something else, or people who are in real need. Concentrate on what matters, please. Dr. Eileen Hanks. Thanks.
Uh, this message is from Susan Dixon. Members of the Lexington City Council, I am writing to ask you not to vote for the approach that you are currently considering to rename some of Lexington's streets. Instead, I ask you to adopt the following procedure. One, vote to remove the current names of our city streets that commemorate the lost cause of the Confederacy. Confederate Circle, Jackson Avenue, Lee Avenue, Rebel Ridge, Stonewall Street. Two, establish a citizens' committee to research and recommend new names to the city council within three months. I also ask that this committee be tasked with developing a citizens' handbook to explain the practical consequences for households directly affected by the change in street names. Thank you for moving forward on changing these street names and thank you for your work on city council. Susan C. Dixon.
I have a note from Michael Strickler. I applaud city council for the policy they have drafted for the potential renaming on certain streets in Lexington. Instead of unilaterally changing the names, council has proposed a very fair option to let residents on these streets make the decision if they choose to do so. I understand the reason some people want to make name changes. However, there are numerous practical reasons why residents on these streets would not want a name change. So, city council has provided these residents an opportunity to make the decision in an equitable manner. Michael Strickler.
From Fifty Ways, Rockbridge. Good evening. We address you this evening
We address you this evening as a coalition of four organizations and more than 250 citizens interested in asking city council to carry through on its commitment to racial justice. The following petition will be formally submitted to council in April. To date, it has garnered 278 signatures with the majority being from residents registered to vote in the city of Lexington. We petition the City Council of Lexington, Virginia to commit to renaming five city streets whose current names preserve a damaging legacy of veneration for the generals of the Confederacy and the lost cause of a society built on slavery. Confederate Circle, Jackson Avenue, Lee Avenue, Rebel Ridge, Stonewall Street. We believe that the streets of our city just as much as just as much as constituent parts like its city cemeteries belong to the community and not solely to the property owners on each street. Further, we believe that reconciliation with Lexington's past requires the moral leadership of our elected officials and is explicitly named as a task to be addressed in the city's recently adopted comprehensive plan. For these reasons, we oppose the street naming plan that council is currently considering. It would lay the burden and cost of this reckoning and reconciliation where it does not belong on individual property owners who are neither responsible for naming the streets that run in front of their parcels nor have a greater claim to preserving or removing those names. We ask that an ongoing process for renaming streets begin with a council vote to agree to remove the current names and establish a citizens committee charged with researching and recommending to council within three months a slate of new names along with a citizens handbook for handling the practical consequences for those households directly affected. This position is sponsored by the community organizations represented below and is endorsed by the individuals signing it. 50 Ways Rockbridge, Rockbridge NAACP, Care Rockbridge and the Rockbridge Justice Coalition.
From Stephanie Richard, dear Lexington City Council, I'm a lifelong Lexington and Rockbridge County resident. As a child, I recall hearing the names Confederate Circle and Rebel Ridge and feeling some pride about being a Southerner. It is clear that from an early age, I received messages that being a Confederate or a rebel was something positive about my identity in my community and part of what it meant to be a Southerner. In reality, I had no idea what those words really meant. I grew up in a modestly liberal home in which those messages were not instilled in me. They were messages I received from the community influenced by leaders like the city council. I want to make that clear. I learned from community leaders like you that the terms Confederate and rebel were positive and that I should take pride in them. While I am proud to be a Lexingtonian, Virginian and Southerner, I no longer equate Confederate or rebel with that identity. Instead, I see those words for what they are, anti-American and discriminatory. They are in place to maintain the status quo of white people claiming the superiority over all others. Names like Confederate Circle and Rebel Ridge are part of a pattern of misinforming what it means to love this place, what it means to be from this place. As an adult, I am proud to be a Lexingtonian, a Virginian and a Southerner for different reasons, like the natural beauty of this place and how friendly we are to each other and strangers. I feel uncomfortable when I hear the words Confederate and rebel, particularly in context of socially approved establishments like street names. I don't want other white children like I was to be misinformed about the ways in which they should be proud of their identity. I don't want non-white children to see those names and feel threatened or as if they do not belong in this community. As a white person parroting a black child, how should I explain why these terms are still acceptable in the establishment? How should I explain why city council members have not worked to change an injustice? In my opinion, there is no excuse for allowing any more time to go by before changing these two street names. It is your responsibility to act. Thank you, Stephanie Richard.
Thank you to all the people that wrote in and again, thank you council members for reading those public comments, citizens' comments into the public record. Additionally, this evening, city council has received a petition signed by 130 folks. It appears to all live in Lexington and the petition reads as follows. We, the following residents of Lexington City are opposed to the city officials selling the Spotswood property for use as a 150 apartment units, four-story complex. It should be for cemetery expansion. And that is again signed by 130 folks. This will be available in our minutes and on the city website if you want to review the names of and the details, detailed names of this petition. I'm not aware of anybody else that wanted to speak to council this evening. And with that, we would venture on to our consent agenda. We have the request from David Wells to hold the Woods Creek Trail Run and Rich Hastings for street closure for the Memorial Day Celebration Monday, May 31st. I'd ask for council's consideration of those items.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Ziegler and second by Ms. Alexander and roll call vote. Mr. Smith? Your ears?
I.
You're all good?
Hi.
Ms. Strong?
I.
Ziegler?
I.
Alexander?
I.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Progressing on to reports and commissions, Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith?
Pre-bid meeting was held last week and still confirming when bids are due, but I'm going to speculate into the month. I'll keep you posted with how things are coming along. But finally, things are moving along with cell two construction.
And we, I would just add that we pray for minimal rain on the landfill so that we don't have additional leachate to process adding expenses to the cost of the operations of the landfill. Main Street Lexington?
Yes, we met Tuesday, March 9th. And the stay-to-stay program that I've talked about before to encourage people to move to Lexington is no longer on our agenda after having a presentation from a Realtor that the housing market continues to be very active in Lexington with very little availability. It does not make sense to recruit folks to live here if we can't house them. So instead, the Economic Vitality Committee will update the Main Street Lexington website so it'll be a repository of information and grant opportunities for businesses and residents. The committee will also update the inventory of available downtown spaces. There will be a Lexington Brick and Parking Meter fundraiser soon and there'll be more details to come. And thank you very much to our Public Works Department for working with Main Street. Sounds like a fun opportunity. And there's lots of activity going on downtown. I'd like to offer my best wishes to the folks at Babies First on their retirement and welcome to Rockbridge Barbells and that's where Gladiola Girls used to be. And Curated Interiors is coming soon to the former Urban Farm Girls space. The soon to open Electric Pilates will be in the Former Ladies Habit space. And welcome to the newly opened Clover on Washington Street in the J. McLaughlin location. Clover opened on St. Patrick's Day yesterday, which is very appropriate. And that's all I have.
Member of councils have any questions? Leslie, thank you for that report and yes, the ribbon cutting and grand opening of Clover was a huge success on a beautiful afternoon on St. Patrick's Day had a great theme. So good, good things going on downtown. Planning Commission, please.
We met last Thursday and we continued our work on our annual zoning ordinance amendments. We also got an update from Arnie on the Woods Creek Trail extension along Ross Road. You know, there's always, there's been a plan for the brushy blue connection. And one of the pieces that's missing is in between Kendall and the Woods Creek Trail. And so the planning department and Public Works are sending out notices to the neighbors on Ross Road to notify them that we'd like to put a sidewalk there to be a connector. It'd be on the opposite side of where the current sidewalk is. So we're waiting to get feedback from the residents before hopefully proceeding with that project. And we also offered our thanks and best wishes to Bonnie. She has moved to Roanoke. So we very much appreciate all her work and that's all I have.
Thank you, Leslie. Any questions for planning?
In the brushy blue trail project, which I'm a huge supporter of, what's the objection of using the sidewalk that's already in place and just the crosswalks?
Yeah, the sidewalk that's in place, as you probably know, has steps in it. It's not really very accessible. It's between the steps and how narrow it is. It's not great for walking or biking. So they're hoping to put on a better path on the opposite side of the street.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Strong.
I have, I have a question for Ms. Strong about the trail. The, I was under the impression at some point that there would be a walkway along the creek. Did that ever go anywhere?
Along which part?
Which creek? The creek that runs behind the houses.
Oh, yeah. And actually, I'm glad you brought that up. And Jeff may be in a better position to answer this or Arnie if he's on the call, but that is another option. If, if to present to the neighbors, whether instead of having another sidewalk in front of the house is possibly putting a trail along the creek behind the houses. So thank you for bringing that up.
Which would mirror the way the trail goes beside the creek in other sections.
Yeah, yeah. Since Jeff is here, if you want to add anything to that, but.
You're correct, Leslie. It's been a while since I met with Arnie, but that was the last discussion we had was approach to the neighbors about putting the trail behind their homes or along the creek. Trying to do a substantial width sidewalk in front or on the edge of pavement would require some serious retaining walls at several locations. And so it becomes an option. Do the homeowners want to look out their front windows and see the retaining wall or would it be more amenable to having that trail behind their home? So we'll learn more when we get feedback.
Great. And I do see Arnie too. It's hard when you can't fit everyone on the screen. Do you want to add anything to that, Arnie?
Only that I sent letters out, I believe it was the end of last week and I haven't heard from any of the property owners yet. I did meet with Mr. Gianini who lives across the street on that section of Ross as the, I guess, informal mayor of that section of Ross Road, just to go over some potentials or alternates for that section. But we just really plan to hear back from those property owners or about six of them, if I remember correctly, on that side of the street to see what their preference is. Ultimately, our sort of goal would be potentially a tap grant transportation alternatives, which would be in June, the first part of that. And we're trying to coordinate this with RAC slash Kendall to see where the other end of this would end up or where the termini would be because it has to have a terminus for an application.
Thank you. And that's our team report.
Arnie, are there any existing easements on the back of the property with the creek? Because the, or do the property owners own to or into the creek?
I remember correctly, they own to the creek or into the creek, but I will have to check on that. We wouldn't want to give them a preference, obviously, front side or backside of their property. But if it does go through the back, there is a potential of needing those easements.
Terrific. Thank you. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Ayers?
Tourism Board had a special meeting on March 10th to discuss the Lexington Visitor Center lease, which is up for renewal in March of 2022. After going over our options, the board directed staff to begin discussions with CenturyLink for a three-year renewal. Currently, we pay $4,300 a month and we traditionally have negotiated three-year leases with CenturyLink. By doing three years, they have, they have given us very small 3% increases each year. So we're going to move forward with that, but we'll also continue to explore opportunities to sublet a portion of the facility for office space to an outside agency if that opportunity presents itself. Separately, Tourism will also investigate the purchase of a mobile visitor center that could be stationed at well-traffic events throughout the region. Our regular meeting was on March 17th and Marketing Director Patty Williams shared the very positive news that Virginia Tourism has selected a photo of Natural Bridge as one of their three 2021 Virginia Travel Guide covers. Potential visitors to the Commonwealth can go to Virginia.org/travlguide to receive a free copy. Tourism set aside $9,000 in our fiscal year 21 budget for our sponsorship grants, which are to assist local organizations with sponsorships for high-traffic events. As there weren't any large crowd events in fiscal year 21 to sponsor because of COVID, the board elected, has elected to roll that 9,000 over to fiscal year 22. So the total budget for sponsorship grants in fiscal year 22 will be 18,000 with 9,000 going to events in the first half of fiscal year 22 and 9,000 for the second half. A deadline for applications for the first batch of sponsorship grants will be in June and the application guidelines are still being worked out. But if any organizations are interested, they can reach out to Tourism Director Gene Clark for more details. Wanted to add one mention to something Eric Wilson was kind enough to speak about the Natural Bridge Exhibit, Natural Bridge and American Art exhibit at the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts. For those interested and who can't get to Richmond anytime soon, they've actually hopefully posted on YouTube an hour-long video going through some of the pieces from the exhibition. And you can find that on the Rockbridge Historical Society's YouTube channel or just by going to YouTube and searching for Virginia Arcadia Natural Bridge. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Ayers?
The sponsorship opportunities, applications are due, would you say, end of, end of June?
Yeah, I believe that that's right and they will, still working on the application and the guidelines and I'll have more information on that in April. But if organizations in town are interested in this and want to get a little bit more information, I would direct them to Gene Clark.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Rockbridge Area Recreational Organization, Mr. Ziegler?
The RARO Board of Directors met yesterday and we approved our job description for the executive director. So we'll be getting that out very soon. We had received good input from the two cities in the county so that, so that we're in a good place. And as far as our local kids participating in athletics, we're at a time where soccer and football games are happening and participation right now in the spring. And just in about less than two weeks, we start registration for softball and baseball. So our folks are busy, but kids, when it's not raining, are able to be active throughout the city and the county and over in Buena Vista. So it's a good time. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Ziegler? Thank you to all of RARO for doing great things with our children in very trying times. And it's exciting to go down the bypass and what looks like the little guys practicing and having soccer games. You know that life's a little bit normal and the way it should be. So thank you for all the work you do with RARO. For my report, I have more, two items. More perhaps therapeutic for me. One, modestly superstitious. And at our last meeting, I heap congratulations on Coach Walkenheim at VMI for being undefeated. And they won again last week and remain undefeated. And I wanted to recognize them and the great success that they had on the football field and encourage them best of luck in their upcoming. and encourage them best of luck in their upcoming games as the season begins to wind down. But if I understood correctly, VMI may be ranked in the top 25 for the first time in many, many years. So congratulations to them and still odd to see football in March. But good to see, again, some of the activities coming back. Have received many phone calls, emails, few prayers, and other things concerning the city council's unsolicited offer on spots with the property. And I just feel the need to respond to a couple of underlying themes and in hopes of providing some education and perspective on what city council is evaluating. Number one, and first and foremost, the city is not broke and needing to sell a property to to pay our bills to keep the lights on, as was suggested by a couple of what I will consider wise guys. City Council certainly looking to plan for the future, and that property has been on the radar for quite some time for development. And unequivocally, I feel very strongly that city council is not in a rush. We have not been hurrying this. There's been a great deal of communication. There's been a great deal of collaboration. Many people just have not joined the conversation until the most recent couple of weeks. But there are developers in the area who were contacted four years ago and invited to make an offer when Noah Simon was city manager, and people chose not to take any action on it. But it's been on the radar for the city of Lexington, as we've had it for a number of years. And we look at the VDOT property coming online in the not-too-distant future. For those who have suggested we have no data suggesting that there's any housing needs here such as this, I refer them to the city website, which has a copy of the Dantor study that was done in 2019. While it's not perfect, and it is a couple of years old at this point, it does give some insightful information that I would think most of the developers and certainly city council is looking to for the reasoning for such development. One of the things that I think is really important to understand, when any of us use a Realtor and sell a piece of property, we exchange the keys for a check. When the city sells a piece of property, we're theoretically and technically investing in the future for the city. Because whatever that project turns out to be, whatever that development is, does have ramifications for tax collections into the future. So I encourage people when you to to pause and research a little bit on that type, as people have mentioned, incentives for working with the developers on that property and in future endeavors such as the VDOT property. It's not so much the price that you get, because we don't exchange the keys for a check, but for an income stream. And the professional firm, the Timmons Group, that we've utilized in the past and currently has made it very clear with the economic development that they advise, it's all about the terms going into the future. Again, on the the theme of not rushing and not being clandestine, there were this contract was first introduced at a January council meeting. Subsequently, Echelon had four public meetings. If you miss them, you have the opportunity to review them and see the things that Echelon is proposing and get to know them and what they hope to do a little bit better. Citizens that ask questions and members of the public who participated in those. And as I was quoting the paper saying, I I feel very, very comfortable in saying council will take their time to be respectful to the offers and more importantly, responsible to citizens to do this right. We only have the opportunity to sell this property one time. And I know and I have great confidence that this council that you elected to represent you and carry out the work of the city will take their time and do the right thing for our community, for all the citizens. Those that are referenced as being marginalized and needing services like RARO and Community Table, as well as those on the other end of the spectrum. With that, I will conclude my my therapy session and sharing that information. And again, we'll highlight that council members are available and welcome your input in the formal meetings such as this setting and in the grocery store and restaurants and other things as well. And with that, I'd like to call on the city manager to deliver his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little COVID vaccine update. All city employees who are in the last category of Group 1B eligible individuals may now sign up for vaccination this coming Tuesday at the Old Gordmans Peebles Center north of town. This also includes county employees and all Buena Vista employees as well. That is county, Rockbridge County employees, the city of Buena Vista employees. The farmer's market, of course, is getting ready. And for several weeks, Mitch Wapner, the market master for the market, has been providing me with information about the preferred manner in which the market will continue to operate as spring and summer race toward us. Due to the continuation of COVID, the market will continue to ask vendors to set up in every other parking space. Thus, the anticipated 20-plus or minus vendors will occupy 70%, 75% of the city parking lot. Mitch is informing that the vendors have also been clearly communicated with about maintaining good relations with surrounding businesses. Of course, everybody desires a successful market and a successful business business environment adjacent to the market for all concerned. Little update on our chief of police search. The candidate pool for the chief position has been narrowed down, and personal interviews are currently being scheduled and occurring. I hope to make an offer probably next week. The Rockbridge Area Department of Social Services Facility Planning is undergoing work. The committee is evaluating possible options for a new social services facility. And they've reached a decision that an architect will be required to finalize concept build-outs and cost estimates for the three sites being reviewed. That recommendation request for approval is going to the Board of Supervisors, the DSS Board, and the Buena Vista and Lexington City Councils in the next several weeks. City Council will therefore see this item on the April 1st agenda. Utility cutoffs, something the staff and I agonize over each month. And this month, we have good news. We have only two utility cutoffs. And frankly, this might be the lowest record that I've seen since I've been here with the city. We still have significant number of accounts that are on arrears. However, the vast majority are now on payment plans and working down their balances as agreed upon. While we always are disappointed to see any customer cut off, the two accounts in question that are going to be cut off have $500-plus bills, and we've reached out to them and they've not responded to us. So the action we'll take to cut them off normally brings about an immediate phone call. And when that phone call comes, if they have financial needs, we will refer them to RARO. RARO has significantly provided support only for customers who are significantly financially challenged and has a very successful screening process. Stephanie Tomlin, the Public Works, does an excellent job handling this very tough assignment. A little bit on the American Rescue Plan funding. While much is being said about the American Rescue Plan that is coming out of Washington to combat the economic consequences of COVID, details are still a bit murky. The Virginia Municipal League, Virginia Association of Counties, International City Management Association, Virginia First Cities, Central Shenandoah Pine District Commission, and others are carefully watching and interpreting the program details as they come from Washington. While it is clear that local governments, including Lexington, will receive payments for COVID-related expenses and losses, we do not truly know how eligibility for payments and documentation of payments will occur. But everyone is watching carefully. A little update from the Lexington Fire Department, something quite unusual. You may be surprised that the Fire Department was recently awarded a $4,200 equipment grant from the Rockbridge Farm Bureau. This grant has permitted the department to have at their disposal a grain bin rescue equipment outfit. Deaths in grain storage bins are increasing nationwide as more farmers are storing more grain on site for livestock. Falling into a grain bin is a serious risk as the cascading grain and the weight of the human body can quickly submerge a person who then suffocates. Thirty-eight deaths were reported in the U.S. in 2019. The Rockbridge Farmers Farmer Co-op is acting to provide this equipment to the LFD to protect its members. Hooray to the co-op. Vulture patrol. While many of us see vultures circling above us as they seem rather innocuous, those who live and live near vulture roosts know the distasteful impacts of dozens of these large animals that eat only carrion and roosting above your home or yard. Vultures generally roost in higher locations so they can leave their roost early in the day and catch the warm air thermals that helps them circle effortlessly in the sky. So much of the trouble, so most of the trouble within the city is experienced by homeowners on the hillsides or pressed to the hills in Lexington. Fortunately, Officer Lauren Dreeland, as part of her many duties, spends part of her day attempting to drive the vultures out of town to new roosts. Unfortunately, vultures, like people, are creatures of habit, and it is a never-ending effort. And cats. Officer Dreeland has also been busy in the Hook and Graham Lane areas, trapping, spaying, vaccinating, and releasing feral and stray cats. Cats can produce several litters a year, and having feral cats in your area could quickly mean dozens of cats are your closest neighbors. Thank you for the many hours of hard work, Officer Dreeland. And that's the end of my report. If there are any questions, I'll attempt to answer those.
I have a question. You'd mentioned about the grain storage bin. You gave gave the numbers. But it wasn't clear to me that there were any numbers that were directly related to Rockbridge County. Were there any?
I'm not aware of any numbers of deaths in Rockbridge. I should say that here in the Shenandoah Valley, the Rockingham County Fire Department and our own fire department are the only two departments who now have this equipment. So it can be used throughout the region in an emergency.
So the 36 was what region, the 36 that you mentioned?
The deaths?
Yes, what region?
Those were nationwide.
I see. Yeah. So maybe this is this is a preemptive purchase to have available should there be a need, not there's a not that there's a great need, it's just being prepared.
It is being prepared. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Members of council, I have any other questions for the city manager? Hearing none. City Attorney, any report this evening? Jared, are you with us? I know he wasn't.
I I think I would. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Yes, we can. Thank you.
I was unmuted on my phone, but muted on Zoom. So now that's all squared away. So I've got a brief report tonight. We finally have an order in the water tower case that was signed and entered today. So that is done and taken care of. The final position of the city is that the city can use the property or sell the property as long as it maintains an easement for the water lines that are buried under the property that are continue to be part of the city's water distribution system. So the final ruling is that the because the city is still using the property as part of its water distribution center system through those buried underground mains, that the the potential trigger of that reversion back to the original owners has not come to pass yet. The city is still using it as part of their water system. But we needed some way to be able to still use the property, and I think this does that. So we could sell the property to whomever we choose as long as any part of the property retains an easement for use of the water distribution system. So in reality, that was never envisioned that, you know, we would sell it and somehow get rid of those water mains. It was always part of the sale that those water mains were there and we needed an easement. So we essentially lost nothing, but gained some clarity and I think a way forward for whomever ends up owning it. Jim did, I believe, today reach out to Edwin Gaskin, who currently has the contract on it, to inform him of the progress we made. And we're, I imagine, we're waiting to hear back from him on how he he would like to proceed. And of course, we'll we'll update council as that progresses. Otherwise, that's the only thing I have specifically, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I I have one question, Jared. So so the the water easement, does that run all through the property? Or can there be some portion of the property that's basically split off and maintained ownership? I'm just trying to figure out where that 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 water line runs. Is it is it directly through the property so that it couldn't, if needed, be severed from the room? I I I'm just trying to picture how a buyer would consent to the city having an easement that could could unilaterally drop said easement. I mean, i- in the sale of the property, could we? I'm sorry, I'll withdraw this question and reformulate it when we speak of this again. Thank you.
Sure. But I guess, generally speaking, there was never any consideration, to my knowledge, of doing anything with those water mains other than leaving them where they are. So I think we we're not giving anything away that we weren't going to have in any case. It's also written that any part of the property, so for whatever reason, someone comes in and wants to move those water lines and is willing to pay to do so, obviously with the city's okay, they could be relocated on the property to perhaps a more convenient spot. The only restriction is some part of the an easement on some part of the property for use of the water system, which I think is broad enough to hopefully sort of meet anyone's needs.
Jared, I don't know if you if you recall where the water lines were, but it seemed like they close the line closest to the street or where it came in from off the street was where basically the proposed driveway would be anyway. Is that right? And then it crosses over into the property. So it wouldn't have affected still, you could still build house, a couple of houses out on the street as well.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think there's definitely still usable. A good portion of the property is certainly still usable, even with those easements as it would stand now currently in place without moving the water mains.
Jared, I think I have similar question. The the contract currently provides for for condos or for units in the water tower and then the potential of four to five building lots. And obviously, or my perception would be, if you have homes that you build and would sell off, those would be deeded separately. And with those, would you be able to transfer that property with or without the easement? Or could you? Could could those home sites be sold off with no easement?
If they're not part of the easement that we would need for the water distribution system, then I would say yes. That as long as we retain an easement on any part of the property, the rest of it can be sold to multiple, you know, sort of multiple times. We sell it to a developer, builds houses on it, sells those houses. As long as the property as it stands now, some portion of that has the easement for the city's distribution system, then that there's no problem with that.
Terrific. Thank you. Any other questions for the city attorney? Congratulations on getting us thus far and look forward to the next step. Been a long, strange trip, to be sure.
Indeed, but very good progress today.
Excellent. Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item is new business, and the first item is the Evergreen Cemetery Entrance Improvement Proposal.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, you're all aware that you and community members have suggested for some time that the city should consider initiating some improvements to the condition aesthetics of Evergreen Cemetery. City staff has been reviewing possible means of improving and highlighting the initial appearance of the cemetery through focused improvements to the entrance and landscaping in the area of the entrance to the cemetery. These improvements are shown in the attached materials, and the total estimate for the work, as shown, is in the range of $50,000. While this is only the first step in any improvements that could occur to the future and accent and highlight the cemetery, these are improvements that can be undertaken immediately. An accent and highlight the cemetery, these are improvements that can be undertaken immediately and completed in the months ahead, not nee- not years from now. The focus of these recommendations is to preserve as much as possible the current historic features of the entrance masonry. But to enlarge the entrance to permit improved vehicular access. In a similar fashion, the suggested landscape plantings would be designed to center attraction and attention on the entrance way and beautify the adjacent area. City arborist Celia Rainey has presented three scenarios for new landscaping and while each scenario is estimated to be less than two thousand dollars. I would suggest that some additional funds be permitted for an additional landscaping needs that may be suggested. Once the area is opened up and fully visible for inspection. Ms. Rainey has recommended scenario number two to be the preferred course of action she would take. In a similar fashion, I would note that a small additional allocation for the overall project could be provided. To assure that the additions can be made to the scope of the project should surprises be encountered. So my recommendation to city council is to approve these improvements to Evergreen Cemetery to begin in the current fiscal year. Further, I recommend that funding of sixty thousand dollars for these improvements. Be allocated from the current funds that originated from the FY twenty budget carryover and are now in the unallocated uh, funds in the FY twenty budget. And I can happily answer any questions you've had those.
Very good. City council um. Would welcome your consideration of this issue.
Uh, one question that I have is in regard to the um, plantings. And the plantings being suggested indicate that bees and insects. Like these particular plants and I wonder how much bees like these plants. Um, because if you're attending a funeral and you're attacked by bees, that's not going to be a good scenario. Um, just want to throw that out there for consideration. Perhaps Jeff, you might know something?
Carolyn, I won't pretend to be the tree or plant expert here, but we can certainly look at other options if that presents a problem. I'm, I'm more the wall guy, not the tree guy.
Okay. Um, you know, the, the plant itself is, is nice. Um, is just that when. Uh, there was mention in the report about the bees and insects. Being a good thing, they are a good thing, but perhaps not at funeral time. Um. So I, that's something to, to take a look at and. I have a question about the stone entrance and whether you want us to. Consider making that wider, that entrance wider, or is that something you definitely are going to do?
If Jeff? Questions for me. I, I would recommend uh, making the interior columns wider. They've been hit a couple of times as evidence in the field.
Right. Um, I know at one time we talked about just taking those interior ones down. Um, but what we'll do, I guess, you're thinking about moving them closer to the outside columns?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And the? Good. I've got two questions. Um, the first one. There's a blue sign that I think was placed there for probably nine-one-one purposes, you know, fire department related. Um, that kind of is a focal point as you go in that entrance. Is there, will that be? It, can it be moved to the side or not be such a focal point?
It can be David. We'll probably have to get with uh, Trenton and make sure that we're satisfying their needs and we can probably incorporate that.
Of course, it's just something that I think note, everyone notices when they come up to that main entrance there. And then second, just as far as the funding source, um, we've. I feel like we've dipped into the carryover a few times uh, in the last few months. And I've lost track, if you will, on, on how much uh, remains in that carryover. Uh, if you know that number Jake or Jim?
Sure, it's approximately six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, taking into effect the uh, taking into account the seventy-five hundred for the recycling. Um, program rollout, uh, which has not yet been appropriated, but you know, it, it has been allocated and is on our radar.
Thank you. Appreciate you having that number uh, handy. Can I make a, can I make a uh, motion then to approve these improvements to the Evergreen Cemetery?
I have one, one more question, David.
Oh, sure, please.
Get the motion in a second and then we'll have a robust discussion.
Okay.
So you have a motion? And welcome. Thank you, uh, Mr. Smith, a second. Ms. Alexander, go right ahead.
And just back to the um, plantings, were they all going to be concentrated at the entrance area? Or dispersed throughout the cemetery in place of those other, I guess, hedges?
This is just for the entrance way at this time. We haven't taken time to review the interior of the cemetery and. As, as, as I suggested, that should probably be a future project.
Will they be um, down the board, the border of New Market Street? Or inside the entrance of the, of the gate?
They will be along the border, sort of um, at the same um, distance from the street as the entrance way. Gate at this time, but it'll be on the uh, but on the edge of uh, New Market Street.
Okay. Well, I guess that's okay for the bees. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff, um, so the, the current entrance will just be modified. And it improved, but it will, it will still, it's not being rebuilt totally. Is that correct?
I believe I met, it, it's probably been, I think it was February, January, February, pre-pandemic when I met Skip Ravenhorse. And Robbie Faulkner on site. At that time, we looked at options for putting a new facade on the existing wall. Certain portions of the existing wall are in pretty bad shape to be honest and we don't know how practical that was. Um, we were trying to salvage some of the existing capstones on columns at the ends and reuse that and sign. I think Skip showed that on the presentation uh, the all saw tonight. Um, Skip followed through just recently and finally getting a quote from Robbie on the work and I think that it does include rebuilding a cer- a good extent of that wall.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, can you confirm um, looking on page uh, four of eight? Of uh, skips that was included in the packet on page ninety-nine of one hundred and eighteen of the uh, council packet. There are two independent pillars and it's shown that they're twelve feet apart. Are, are those, what's the space that those are currently? Right there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have to measure that to give you exact measure. I think it's, I think it's less than that right now. It's many times, many dings and dents as you see, you know.
Right. Um, it, it's very attractive picture, but um, I, I question the wisdom of additional target practice and the um. Poor state that they're in currently um, and may um, I, I would hope improve the project. And improve the function with eliminating those and having some fencing, uh, but having. You know, I, I'm not sure what space would be appropriate, but between the equipment to get in for burials and then the hearse and, and other things. I think we may need to be more than the twelve feet um, to, to avoid additional accidents.
I, I would agree with that and again, our conversation, my conversation with Skip and Robbie is somewhat dated. Uh, but we had actually talked about maybe moving those interior just slightly and offsetting and making it wider, if you can envision that.
Uh, cer- certainly can, but it um, I guess my concern is there in, in such poor condition and. Uh, se- seems um, to be a bit of a challenge. And if, if there's still, if you don't accomplish the uh, necessary.
I, I, I should, I should qualify that. I think a good portion, the most recent quote that was received by Skip. Uh, was new construction, so it's not literally picking them up and moving them. It would be building new ones and trying to salvage the capstones, again, moving them interior if need be and making them wider.
Gotcha. Very good.
There's a, there's other access to the cemetery uh, for large equipment vehicles, not through those gates. Is that, is that correct?
No, there is no other. Any other access, you would have to cross over uh, graves.
Okay.
I can try to show you a picture of, of what the uh, stonework looks like. If you can see.
It's bad, bad condition.
Gouged out area there and both of them look like that.
If you haven't, I encourage members of council to, to go by and see um, one, just the overgrowth. Uh, leading up to the property and the entrance has been um, neglected, so eager to um, see this project accomplished. In, in the most responsible way.
And Frank, the uh, drawing says that the distance between those two inside pillars is already twelve feet. So to make that entrance wider, they would need to be moved toward the other pillars on the outside.
Right. Which it almost seems like putting some fencing and have it not, not a pillar on a pillar, if, if you will.
So.
Perhaps, but there's um, an iron gate there on either side, I believe. So you know, there could be something decorative that way to balance the entrance out.
Exactly. Dennis?
I was just gonna agree with you Frank. I, I mean, I'll have to go back and look at this, but it seems like it would be. More aesthetically pleasing to get rid of those two center pillars and just go with the pillars. On the, on the end, you know, so, so it's a much wider open space, but I'm not sure how you would close that. You would need a gate there, correct? I mean.
The, the gate that used to um, close the cemetery has been gone for a number of years. Um, so what?
It's just open now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the iron gates that they have now are between the pillars on each side.
Okay.
Decorative.
I see, I see. So it would be hard to have a gate that broad. I mean, I'm assuming that they had those inside pillars so that they could have. Like pedestrian gates and then a, so maybe they have to stick with that arrangement. Um. But I, I would agree with you. If we can get away with, with, with just the pillars on the outside, it would look better.
Yep. I agree.
Jeff, I hope we're giving you some uh, de- design support and if you have additional questions, um, please, please let us know, but um, the um. Uh, there's a motion in a second and is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Alligood?
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler?
Hi.
Mr. Strawn?
Hi.
Grayers?
Hi.
Ms. Alexander?
Hi. Good news.
Yes, uh, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Uh, thank you staff for working on this and getting it turned around and uh, look forward to. Uh, we're, working through the details to have a, a better solution there uh, for our community. Next item on the agenda um, is the uh, addition, four additional offers that we've received in the past. I believe eight days. Uh, it's important for council to um, certainly evaluate these and, and acknowledge them and we certainly do acknowledge them. Um, in light of uh, the Piovano property. And Mr. Grigsby's offer, um, I'm not sure I saw details to uh, a offer from the RARo board. But uh, certainly Val articulated tonight that uh, they're interested in buying it. And I think it's incumbent upon council to work on determining the, the future. Uh, of the Piovano building before looking at development opportunities. Uh, to know if it will, uh, the options before you uh, could include the Piovano building and may not, but if you want to um, consider selling. I, you accepting Mr. Grigsby's offer in particular, uh, we would need to, to deal with that and I would encourage council. To uh, direct city staff to begin negotiations um, with uh, Mr. Grigsby and or um, RARo Board of Directors. Uh, to, to work towards that end. But uh, would uh, ask the city manager for uh, his input and then we will uh, open the floor for discussion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. I would agree that um. In order to look at these options appropriately. The first matter of business should be to evaluate Piovano building and that land it sits on to see if there's a. Desire to sell that land to any of the uh, interested parties to at this point. Uh, that would give us guidance to go back to any of the multiple other uh, proposals. As to whether they're going to be working with three point two-four acres or two point three acres. Um, I would suspect that I, I know in fact that Mr. Gaskin has said. He needs that information to put forth another proposal because it doesn't make sense for him to spend time and effort. Not knowing which outcome council may choose. I would suspect that's the same thing, uh, same is true for Mr. Ivan Koff, Mr. Adamson and the other proposals that just came in today. So with direction from the city council, I'd be happy to um. Speak with uh, RARo, speak with Mr. Grigsby to see what their uh, intent is. And I'd actually ask uh, council to give me some guidance or provide guidance on that. Perhaps in closed session, so our negotiating position would be uh, protected.
Members of council, have any um, comments or questions of the city manager?
I'll make some comments if uh, since we are going to go into closed sessions to discuss it, I just. I, I will let as much as my opinion be known um, without negotiating the deal out front. First of all, I want to say thank you to Ben Grigsby. That is a amazing and generous offer. Um, that you've made and um, thank you to RARo for everything you do. You are essential to our community. We, we are in an, an enviable position negotiating with RARo because we do, do know that you are essential to our community. But um, uh, you know, my personal opinion and we'll get down to details in closed session, but I think. An offer, we need to look at what's in the best interest for all of our citizens. And I think we're going to need a higher, much higher offer that takes into consideration the lost opportunity costs. Of this property where, you know, we talked about it all along, that this is an equation and when uh, Echelon offered three hundred and fifty. Thousand dollars for the property, we knew it was not at the tax assessed value or the market rate of that. But we were taking into account the long-term uh, revenues that that property would then generate. And um, so we will have some lost opportunity costs and I, I think we owe it to our citizens to recoup that. I think you have to remember that. RARo again is essential to our community, but eighty-five percent of the households they serve are in the county in Buena Vista. In the county in Buena Vista, both the governments and their citizens have not been a part of this discussion. And uh, I think they are important to get feedback that this is the right location and if they think so. Then they should contribute to the capital campaign as well. I'm sure people want to. If we've, if. One person has made this outstanding offer, I know. Everybody who has spoken tonight in favor of keeping RARo there, I'm sure will contribute to a ca- capital campaign and I would go ahead and encourage them now to start contributing to RARo's capital campaign. Because we know they will have one. Uh, I know every time we talk about taxes. I think about those citizens who can't afford it. I, you know, was the president for Habitat of Humanity for a couple of years. I actually worked on building some houses in Lexington and I'm very proud of it and many more were built without my help. But we have affordable housing in Lexington and the um, purchase price of a house is only one aspect of affordable housing. The ongoing is making sure that the residents can afford the taxes and the sewer and so we. And so we, every time we talk about taxes, those are the folks I think about. Uh, we have to make sure they can continue living in our community, and I know many who spoke tonight, they can afford a tax increase, and they would be happy to use those taxes to to fund RARo, but I that's not a burden we can put on everybody. There needs to be a capital campaign with private donations, and the city cannot bear the brunt of those expenses. So tha- that's my position going into our discussions.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other council members? Wish to make any comments?
You know, I think what's important, again, speaking to the RARo issue, that the city of Lexington and all the citizens understand that that we can that we don't want to mischaracterize the long term relationship that the city has had with RARo. The fact of the matter is that they've been a tenant of the city in this location for quite a long time, and the fact of the matter is that the city of Lexington has provided funding uh for RARo out of our general fund budget uh each year, going back at least eleven years. We this past year, we did not because of the pandemic, but uh for the five years previous, we had provided uh four thousand dollars each year, which um when their rent was six, seven, eight hundred dollars a year, we essentially covered half of that rent with a donation to RARo. And um our our previous city manager had always kept City Council and the RARo Board um in the loop on the potential of the selling or development of this property. Um, this and I and I this is this should not be catching the RARo Board of Directors off guard um or the citizens of Lexington, and so I I just want to share that uh going back years with the previous city manager, we have emails from twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen, when he was meeting with the RARo Board of Directors, making it known at that time that the Piovano Building was under consideration for uh even Central Dispatch purchasing that building and being a tenant in twenty fifteen. And then in twenty eighteen, uh, the city manager again met with the Board of Directors and and shared information that they may be seeing developers walking through the property because it was a um a stated goal of the previous comprehensive plan, and now, of course, the current comprehensive plan and the strategic plan to make use of that site for the highest and best purpose. And uh to get to that point, it might require selling it. And and so I just, um, you know, I hopefully we come through this. Um, I don't think that it was that it's um something that any of us likes to do and relishes uh to uh make our friends and neighbors upset with us as we consider such a decision. But um, long term, over the last decade, I think that we as citizens can feel good about our relationship with RARo. We've done a lot of good for the organization as a city. All city taxpayers have helped with that through our general fund contribution. So my goal is that when we come through this, that the city is in a stronger position because that's our job. RARo, they're doing exactly what they should be doing for their organization to make sure that they thrive. Uh, we have, we each have important interests, and hopefully we can both accomplish our interests. Uh, and so that's just kind of where I'm coming from right now, and as I always say, I feel no sense of urgency. Uh, I always don't mind taking extra time to get something right, and this is a pretty big decision, as we all know. And so uh if two weeks causes somebody to walk away or a month causes someone to to walk away uh quite potentially, that person wasn't the right long term partner for the city of Lexington anyway. So it's just kind of some of my thoughts right now, and I will also say one more thing. There has never been a city proposal that did that that did not get better with public input. And so here we are. This was in the newspaper multiple times, and now in the last month or so, we've gotten a ton of great input. And already, the project, the proposal has gotten better. The worst case scenario was taken off the table by Echelon Resources of the hundred and fifty apartments, and and now a lot of folks still don't like the ninety uh units, but look how we have more offers and look how the public is more informed, and I've learned uh in my time on council that everything has improved with the city, with the public.
David, you've frozen up on us. We'll blame it on the thunderstorm. David, we'll we'll come back to you if you unfreeze. Um, other members of council? Wish to make any comments?
I I just want to first off, thank um all of the organizations that have uh have made proposals in the these last few days. And that includes Mr. Gaskin for his his initial proposal, which sort of kicked this discussion off. And um speaking from my perspective, I I want to add on to a little bit of what Leslie was saying. Um, I I think that the best economic use of this property would be residential development. However, there are other factors to consider. The great work that RARo does for our community is a big factor to consider, but it is important to realize that accepting the sale to of the Piovano Building for that purpose for RARo means that there will be long term economic costs to that decision, and it may be that that we will do that, but that needs to be factored into our our decision making. So tha- that is something that weighs on my mind. However, in an ideal world, I would like to see RARo stay there, but we have to get to that point, and that may take some work. So tha- that was what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mr. Smith?
Uh, during this process, I think three main objections have have come from public comment. Uh, one is the size and scope of the original proposal at one hundred and fifty units and five floors, um, which uh from from this seat was not yeah, as David said, that was a worst case scenario. It's been removed. Um, I don't think it would have been acceptable to put that square peg in in around and the round hole that that it spots would. Uh, that's been slightly addressed down to ninety um and something we can possibly work forward uh as something manageable. Uh, the two other objections that seemed to come up most often was RARo on the community table uh in in the the Piovano Building. The third was the the sale price uh of of the development at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that was pointed out. We now have an offer for four hundred on uh the Piovano Building only. Um, so the RARo objection uh may well have been uh taken off the table if if the sale of Piovano moves moves forward with an offer that's more than the entire development uh offer for a- a- as proposed. So uh, you know, two of the three objections have sort of been addressed, and I'm looking forward to see how we can move forward with this. Uh, but I I'm I'm glad we've had the input we've had. It's it's helped. I think, as David said, council become uh more maybe more cohesive as a unit on moving forward with how this uh develops and um looking forward to um hearing what we learn in closed session. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, just to um piggyback off of what Chuck has said um that um we it's good that we we've had the community engagement, and it's good that we've had multiple offers, because what that does, uh it makes for a healthier decision making process so that you don't have one single party to choose from. Having more choices and options and and terms gives you a lot more flexibility to get something that looks good. Hopefully, and uh hope this continues, and and I'm glad that this has also caused us to slow it down a little bit, to give it more thought. Um, and I was very pleased to hear that there have been offers about saving the the Piovano Building. That lady was was very good to this community to uh make such a donation to us when it was very much in need. But that's one of those warm cushy feeling kinds of things, but also keep in mind that sometimes you weigh situations that may not have anything to do with your monetary gain. The actual cash in hand, because the benefits to the community from RARo and the community table far outweigh how you can measure what they do based on um some commodity offered or what what the money uh is in regard to it. And I think that if the the occupants of RARo want to purchase that building or someone else wants to purchase that building, then we need to consider any of those options that occur to take them si- very seriously. Um, and as as Chuck said, you know, the offer that we have in regard to the Piovano Building is even higher than the land and the building combined from the first offer. So we have to give all of those offers equal consideration and um our due diligence. And I want to thank the public for engaging and um bringing us to this level and having other people put offers out there uh because it makes for a much healthier decision making process.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Anyone else?
Uh, I would like to uh chime in just from my two cents work. Uh, I I would like to see us uh as City Council authorize the city manager to continue negotiations with the RARo Board and to see if there can't be an accommodation. Uh, the value that RARo is to the community is certainly great. It was mentioned that eighty five percent of of the uh population that RARo serves is not in Lexington and may be uh altogether, the RARo Board can come up with a cohesive package that would uh have ownership on the part of the localities that RARo does serve out of that building. So I would be uh definitely in favor of authorizing our city manager to move ahead with uh discussions with RARo as well as the uh other uh people that have submitted bids.
Thank you, Mr. Alligood. I would uh have uh two two observations. Uh, one, I I want to offer a quote that I I think surmises much of what council said. Uh, it's an anonymous quote that collaboration is not about gluing together existing egos. It's about the ideas that never existed until everyone entered the room. We hold these public meetings to allow everyone to be in the room and share their insights. And um my hat's off, and I'm extremely proud to serve with the six members of council who consistently do their homework, ask tough questions, and uh weigh the circumstances for all of our citizens. So uh thank you, council, for the good work that you do. Um, and invite uh citizens to continue to to remain involved on all the topics that we work on um and in support of our elected officials. And with that, um anticipating that no one else has other comments, I would ask Ms. Alexander to read us into the closed session uh scheduled for that we've are pursuing.
I move that Lexington City Council will convene in closed meeting in accordance with section two dot two dash dash thirty seven eleven subsection A, paragraph three of the Code of Virginia, a closed session for the purpose of discussing the disposal of real estate for a public pers- uh purpose. Um, I've made the motion, and I would need a thank you. Uh, roll call vote. Ms. Tron?
Hi.
Mr. Smith?
Uh.
Mr. Ziegler?
Hi.
Mr. Ayers?
Hi.
Mr. Alligood? Mr. Alligood, do you vote aye?
Aye.
Thank you, and I vote aye.
Uh, for members of the public, we will go into a closed session. Um, we do not anticipate uh taking action um uh beyond the direction I think that we've already given the city manager, and um I would um so we will go into closed session, which will disconnect uh from Facebook Live, I believe, and we will not reconnect, but our um recording uh that's posted on the website uh will will reflect us uh anything that we say uh after this, but anticipate it will be merely um uh closing the meeting with adjournment. So with that, uh, we are in closed session. Thank